Heavenly Father, we thank you for our many blessings, including the rights and freedoms that we so richly enjoy in this great country of ours. We ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom and deliberations this evening, and that all voices are heard with dignity and respect. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I welcome everybody tonight. We do have a quorum this evening, so I thank the commissioners for their attendance. Announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is review and approval of the minutes of December 19th, 2018. I trust everybody's had a chance to review those. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
I have a second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, unfinished business, special use permit, SUP 18-001.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Happy New Year for the record, Patrick White, Planning Department. I have a brief presentation, and I'll get it started right now.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
The speaker's not on up here.
Was it perhaps my microphone was just too far away? Can you hear better now? Okay. Then I'll just get a little closer to it. Okay, so this is a special use case, SUP 18-1. At the December 5th, 2018 staff meeting, staff had recommended postponement of any decision on SUP 18-1 in order to obtain four additional documents from the applicant. Those included a landscape buffer, a landscape cover and buffer maintenance plan as recommended by the county's consultant to mitigate temporary temperature increases caused by the facility and to establish procedures for planting and maintenance of vegetation. A soil testing remediation plan is recommended by county consultant to monitor for soil contamination and possibly from the cadmium telluride panels or other heavy metals. A decommissioning plan, excuse me, a revised decommissioning plan is recommended by the county's consultant to address the full breadth of decommissioning a solar energy facility, and a final traffic mitigation plan. Staff received those from the applicant and has conditioned them within your staff report. Additionally, we are recommending conditions to address what we observed as deficiencies in those plans. Staff is recommending approval of SUP 18-1 with conditions. Staff believes the conditions are critical to mitigate the impacts of the project during the construction phase and also during the operations phase. Planning staff has consulted with experts in different fields to craft the conditions in your staff report in order to address health, safety, and welfare concerns. Those experts were within the county, including our fire chief, our director of environmental codes, our zoning director, our director of utilities. We've also consulted with state agencies, including VDOT, DCR, Department of Forestry, National Park Service, and we hired a consultant, Duberry Engineers and their subconsultant, Goldor Associates, to provide analysis and recommendations related to hydrology, decommissioning cadmium telluride, and the heat island/temporary temperature increases. All of those documents, they're all compiled within your staff report. Staff is here to answer any questions, and we've invited those people that provided comment to us to join us tonight to assist in answering questions. I'd like to note that at any point I can display the full list of conditions that staff is recommending. I can display the GDP. I can display pretty much any document that you've seen to date in order to further the dialogue tonight. With that, I will stand by for your questions, and I know that the applicant also has a presentation of their own.
If it please the Chair?
Certainly.
I want to talk about the buffers and setbacks. Were you talking about 350 feet away from residents?
Would you, how about I display that condition for starters, then?
Okay.
Thank you for your patience. That, those landscaping conditions are all grouped together in landscaping maintenance setbacks and buffers. The, what, can you help me? What exactly would you like to talk about?
We talked about these panels. How far away from the neighbor's yard are they going to be? Where do they start?
The setback requirement varies. I'll scroll down to where we discussed that particular condition. Sorry, just getting used to the computer here. All right, so the first condition that speaks to that is condition two. Condition two states that inverters and generators will be set back a minimum 400 feet from the property. That's a, that's a global setback. That doesn't, that, that condition is, just requires that inverters and generators are set back 400 feet. For a property that is, that contains a residence or that contains, or that is within a neighborhood, a platted neighborhood, then that triggers a further setback of 350 feet for basically any solar equipment, solar arrays and supporting structures.
So the equipment starts 350 feet from the boundary line?
If there's a house on that property, or we believe there to be a future house.
Or if it's a piece of property, I think we talked about five acres or less?
There's not a minimum acreage requirement at the present time. I believe that the applicant will speak to that later, but presently there is not a minimum lot size that would trigger that. In the event that there is not a house there, then the setback is presently conditioned here at 50 feet.
Okay. I have another question.
Please.
We talked about wells. I think they proffered, they're not going to dig any wells?
They, the applicant, for starters, you know, three test wells were dug on Site A and one on Site C. The applicant has no, at least for Site A, which is this subject special use case, the applicant has reserved the right to use some well water in the event that the county cannot provide water to them or that they can't use the bulk water service. And if you'll bear with me, I'll put that condition on the screen for you.
Well, you can just answer the question. I don't need to see it.
The answer to the question is the applicant will be using county water, but reserves the right to use groundwater in the event that the county cannot provide utility water, that, for a 10-day period, up to 50,000 gallons a month.
And we're going, we're going to monitor that?
We do have provisions in the conditions to allow us to monitor that.
Okay.
And if you'd like to see that, I'd be glad to show it.
Patrick, getting back to those, the wells, it was my understanding from talking to the applicant that they were going to cap those three wells off and not use them. Is that, has that changed?
That is not what I understand. The applicant has pretty routinely maintained that they need an ability to use groundwater if their plan to use county utility water doesn't work.
Maybe the applicant can, or Charlie can respond to that, because I was in a meeting with the applicant when he told me directly that he was going to, if he wanted to, he'd fill them with cement and cap them off. He wouldn't use them at all.
Well, we certainly wish this to be kind of an interactive dialogue, so if you'd like, Mr. Payne, to answer that question, I would invite that at this time.
May I add something to that? You're exactly right. Mr. Smith, I thought that was going to be controlled by utilities or someone else that it would be capped off and it wouldn't be in use until it was requested. Who can answer that? Well, Mr. Payne can, go ahead.
Hold on a second.
Could come someone?
We got help coming.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Planning Commission. My name is Charlie Payne, and I represent the applicant. Just real quickly, and I'll get to Mr. Smith's question. Just wanted to let you know who's here, since I get to get up here and speak real quick. But we do have here Mr. Ryan Kramer, who's a CEO and President of S-Power. He's here tonight, along with our engineering team and also along with our experts on cadmium telluride, heat island, et cetera, and also our construction teams here. So if there are questions that you have, I want you to know that these folks are here as well. And thank you very much, Patrick, for your hard work on this. But to answer Mr. Smith's question, yes, we agreed to cap those, to cap those wells so that they wouldn't be utilized. That, as you know, the history of how we ended up utilizing public water or agreeing to utilize public water. In various community meetings, there were residents who were concerned about us impacting the aquifer. So in order for us to do the hydrology tests, we had to do test wells. So that's why there are three test wells on the site. That's, and our report was submitted to the county for review. Pursuant to that study, there is adequate water in the aquifers for our project. However, notwithstanding that issue, because of community concerns, we work with public utilities to find an option for public water, and that is what we're primarily using for this project. What's in the conditions is that the county is unable to provide us public water. This is all controlled by the county. The county then would allow us to utilize well water at a limited basis for a short period of time, only during construction. So that's what's in the conditions. So the county controls the whole process. But to answer your question, yes, we agreed to cap them.
Have it Mr. Love Day, can he help? Because I was understanding that the county would control them.
Good evening. It's Ben Love Day, Director of Public Utilities for Spotsylvania County, for the record. Yeah, we would, the connection to public water would be controlled by Spotsylvania County Utilities. We control the pressure and the volume, basically the timeframe when that withdrawal took place. When it comes to the wells themselves, the utility department doesn't have the authority there to control the wells. Those are actually under VDH, and would actually be through, I believe, Mr. Tigner, through the zoning office, since they're part of condition of special use. So the utilities department would not observe the wells themselves that were installed and/or placed on the property. That said, basically it would take a catastrophic event for public water not to be available to the applicant. We would be looking at a potential water emergency declared by the Board of Supervisors or a major drought or a major condition, a major plant failure, something that would be far worse than just a typical main break scenario based on the timeframes that are in the special use permit.
So there wouldn't be any, any way for us to monitor whether they were taking any water at the wells?
If I may, sir, we, we did write up a condition about that. I have it displayed on the computer before you right now. The condition five regarding water use does require that the cumulative onsite groundwater withdrawal be limited to a maximum 50,000 gallons for a day for no more than 10 days per calendar month during construction phase, that the wells be equipped with meters to track water withdrawal, that additional wells shall, no additional wells would be allowed besides those already drilled, which were those three we previously discussed, that meters for any such well would be read and the total withdrawal amount documented by the applicant each day, and that monitoring reports be supplied in accordance with these further requirements here.
Well, I guess my question is, is the county has just told us that they can provide all the water that's needed. So why do we still need the wells? Why can't we cap them off like we said we're going to do?
Well, I don't intend to speak for the, for the applicant, but to my knowledge, I just-
Yeah, I'm not asking you a question. That's just a statement, I'm sorry.
Very good, sir.
I want to-
Unless, unless, Mr. Payne wants to respond to it?
We, we have, of course, we didn't write the conditions, and the staff has independently objectively created the conditions. They understood that if it was a catastrophic event, we would have, you know, we should have access to water like any other property owner. However, to answer your question, cap them. We absolutely agree to cap them. We feel very confident that public utilities is going to be able to provide us the water that's necessary for construction. And just so everyone knows, water usage is mainly for construction. We'll have very little water usage after construction. Mr. Smith, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It doesn't mine. I'm sorry. Mr. Love Day. I, I was under, still under the, and I'm not understanding, I know I'm dumb, but I'm not that dumb. But anyway, I was under the understanding that it would be capped off and that in order, that would have to be water drawn from a well, that it would have to go through the utilities department first. And they would have to uncap it.
We, the utilities department would not be the one to uncap the well or to have the final authorization to uncap that well for usage. I believe that would be through the zoning office, because it's under the special use conditions. The utilities department is not a zoning enforcement agent and therefore would not actually have authority to enforce that provision where the zoning office would have that authority. So you are correct. It's just a different department within the county who would be authorized to execute that withdrawal.
Is Mr. Tigner down there hiding? Okay, so Troy?
Hi, Troy Tigner, zoning administrator. Mrs. Carter, we're going to be out there, you know, on the site enforcing conditions as they're all written from the zoning office. I have three code enforcement officers, myself, Mr. Street, third-party inspectors. So I'm very comfortable in telling you that if they say those wells can be locked, we have people there that'll see that. We'll see there's no pump there, there's no mechanism to withdraw the water in the well. And I think you really don't have to worry about that one.
You think what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think you have to worry about that one. Our onsite staff are going to take care of that.
Okay. I'll take it as you were.
We'll make sure that there's either padlock on it or there's no pump in the well.
Well, I've heard from three people now, I think I'm okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tigner, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have the staff to do this? Are you going to have to hire staff? If so, who's paying for it? And what's the cost going to be?
Well, we have estimated some costs on what inspections will be over 18 months. We believe that'll be about $1.1 million. Costs for inspections will be paid by the applicant through a permit fee structure that's adopted and part of our fee structure. I have consulted with no less than three third-party engineers, Mr. Street himself. We believe that at any one day, we can have 12 environmental personnel on the site to do inspections. That's with the firms of Sullivan, Donahoe, and Ingalls, our primary third-party, procured an engineering, civil engineering firm, and Triple E, it's E-E-E Engineering, oh, Mechanicsville, who are also party to that contract.
So what you're saying is the applicant is going to pay these fees for these employees?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure.
So, Mr. Tigner, on, when I look at the conditions, it, it says that they're basically going to write, there's a report that you follow up on, because you're describing it a little different, that you'd be there to monitor the, you know, pulling out, undoing, unveiling the pump and all that stuff. I mean-
Our eyes and our feet and our boots are going to be all over that site.
So there, that's a lot more than-
We're going to be enforcing that condition, and we're going to be looking at everything. That we're out there that could be a potential issue when we make inspections.
Okay, because this, because this condition is written such that it looks just like it's a report that you just sign in. You know what I mean? It's just like a piece of paper.
Yeah, the condition is really written under the proposal to, as Mr. Love Day had explained, a catastrophic failure, where they cannot receive public water. Then they would have the right to do the well. But I don't know if that condition was just amended at the podium because I heard their legal representatives say they're going to cap the well, they're not going to take any water out of that well. The amount of water that they were talking about for construction, I think I've also heard, can easily be trucked into the site. The 58, 60,000 gallons of water a day they can bring in through tanker trucks every day. No problem. From outside of Spotsylvania County.
I just don't see it as a condition written that way, you know? And I'm worried if it isn't written in that way, then it will be, it will be carried out a different way. So is it somewhere else about? I didn't see anything else about wells and, and the conditions.
If I could have the floor computer, please, guys?
I was hoping you could help me, Patrick.
Thank you. That particular condition regarding cumulative onsite well water or groundwater use is displayed before you. The condition provides that they could only use up to 50,000 gallons a day for 10 days a calendar month, that they use their existing wells, that there'd be meters for those wells, and that there'd be monitoring reports provided to the county detailing their use. And that condition further goes on to require, excuse me, to require some water quality samples be collected from that well as well. No pun intended.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think we have to go back a little bit further to under condition H water, number one. It states the applicant shall only utilize public water during the construction and operation phases of the facility except in the event that sufficient public water is not available to the applicant, in which event the applicant may utilize groundwater during the construction phase only. So that, that really sets up public water first, unless the county cannot provide it for some reason, then well. And then we have the monitoring on the wells. So if the, but if the Planning Commission doesn't believe that that's sufficient and wants to include some additional safeguards in that condition, certainly the Planning Commission can do so. We did feel comfortable at the 50,000 gallons per day based on review by the county's consultant, Goldor. You know, they, they looked at the area, that there's a large recharge area because of the large acreage there, and they felt that 50,000 gallons per day for a 10-day period in one month would be a safe amount that, that they could support without further study.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Two things. One, one, hopefully he can get this fixed, because I'm having a hard time hearing. As far, as far as the water is concerned, I'd like to see it in there that there be no water taken from the ground out there. And that's what the applicant told me in a meeting that he was going to do, so I expect him to hold true to his word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, you're right. We'll cap it and no use, no groundwater use from the site.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes, yes, okay. Go ahead, Mr. White. I would like to talk a little bit about decommission. If you could possibly give me a complete understanding. I've been about 50 years. I've heard a lot of yays and nays. So I'll be 103 years old when this 30 years is up. So I'd just like to know a little bit about the bond review every two years. I'd like to understand if it is a defunct project, which we hope it's not, who is going to pay at the end? Is the county going to have to pay for it? Who's going to pay for it? So there's several questions that I, I need to understand. And I've read a lot of stuff, but I, you know, I know a little bit about bonds, but is this going to be a personal bond or is it going to be every two years? Can you give me some insight on it? Or give us some insight on it?
Thank you, sir. The applicant recently, we, we've seen three decommissioning documents from the applicant. The original was, was revised, I believe, around seconds and middle. And most recently, we received a project decommissioning and site restoration plan in December, which included some updated figures. We identified a few things that we believe needed to be changed in that document and codified them in the condition 17, general condition 17 that is available for display on, on the computer. But generally, the way the decommissioning bond's supposed to work is it's supposed to kind of serve two purposes. One, that, I guess the, the most important purpose is that the bond allows the county to decommission the facility should it go defunct, should, should the applicant for some reason walk away from it. It also serves to ensure that they fully decommission it at the time they leave voluntarily after, after the life of the project. One of the things that I guess is the elephant in the room is whether or not there should be, there should be a credit for future recyclable values of materials on the site. And those materials include notably photovoltaic panels. To date, staff and the applicant don't quite see eye to eye on that. The applicant believes that by the time they decommission the facility at the end of its life cycle, that there will, that there will certainly be some recyclable value for photovoltaic panels and other materials. Staff has taken a more conservative approach because of, well, because we don't know at what time the applicant could walk away from the facility, and we might need to use the bond that we have to decommission it ourselves at the county level. So the decommissioning, our ordinance requires the decommissioning estimate, if you will, be looked at every two years, and that it be adjusted. And our position has been that the decommissioning bond should start high. We don't know the, the future cost of these recyclable, whether or not these PV panels can be recycled. We've actually even seen evidence that says that there's a cost to recycle them rather than a credit to recycle them. So we've been advocating for a higher decommissioning bond, a quite high one, and then seeing it scaled down every two years as more evidence or recyclable program becomes available or as we get closer to having a higher degree of confidence of what those values are, what those recyclable values are. So there's, there's a little, there's some distance there between the bond that they're proposing and what staff is recommending in the conditions.
What is the monetary figure?
The applicant's current monetary figure, bear with me, that's going to take just one second to find, sir.
What's ours?
Well, we, we don't have one. We have a, we have a directive. We have our conditions that describe to them the things they can and cannot do with the decommissioning bond. And we've said that we would like to see that there, that there is not a credit for recycling those.
Okay. While you're looking for that, Patrick, clarify a couple of things. Because the equipment is at the end of its life cycle doesn't mean that the facility will be decommissioned, correct?
One more time, sir.
Because the equipment, the panels and some of the equipment may be at the end of its life cycle, does not mean that the facility will be decommissioned.
That's correct.
They could replace the equipment, and hopefully they have a long prosperous life utilizing this facility of produced power.
That's what we hope to.
And the purpose of the bond is to reevaluate it every two years is to take into consideration those market forces to make sure that if there is an issue where you have to take the bond, call the bond, that it's at least reflective of current market conditions.
That's correct.
Including the volatility in recycling and all those types of things.
Yes, and at this present point, that, that, that future is too unknown for us to allow them to not include those recyclable values. That's been our position.
Right. So, so to use the term "walk away" is not really, that's, that's a term I don't like because I think the full intent is to utilize this facility for as long as they can, even though the equipment may have to be replaced and it's ended the life cycle and all those sorts of things. of things. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only decommissioning question, I, this really goes to interpreting and properly evaluating what the cost and the recycling value is. So, and this is how it's set up pursuant to the conditions. And just one other thing, of a hundred and fifty sites that my client currently owns and operates today that never walked away from any energy generating facility. So it's important to understand that you build the facility. Why? Because we have folks who are going to buy the power, we have long-term power contracts. So the facility, which is a six hundred million dollar investment, which is financed, it has investors, it's a valuable asset in and of itself, whether we're operating it or anybody else. If it's generating energy, it's going to be valuable for its entire life and/or extended life. So the, basically, the bottom line is we're not going to walk away from the site. We're hoping to exhaust it as far out into the future as we can, probably past all our lifetimes. So the question becomes, if you're going to provide a bond, is it for the full cost of decommissioning today versus thirty-five years from now? Or is it taking into account what the value of that asset is today, and as you move forward, you continue to further evaluate it? The chairman made a, a proper comment. Okay, maybe in the future, we don't know what the value of recycled metal copper is, but the county has a condition says that we have to evaluate it every two years. Every two years, we've got to reevaluate that bond. So if the price of metals goes down, then the recycling value goes down and the bond goes up and vice versa. So that's, this is what's typically used by other jurisdictions across the country and in Virginia. Culpeper just passed a hundred megawatt project and only required a five hundred thousand dollar bond for decommissioning. Based on how the county has structured its condition, the bond could be thirty-five million dollars. I mean, that's, that's extraordinary cost for a new business in Spotsylvania County to have to incur when they have a six hundred million dollar asset right in front of you. So all we've asked is take into account the recycling value, that's a fair and balanced approach. You had, you don't, you don't have to predict it now into the future, you actually get to evaluate it every two years. So it's a great safety net for the county in that regard. It gives the business owner and investor an opportunity to get up on their feet and get the project running and operational and generating revenue, and it's fair because you, you should take into account what the asset is. Believe me, we have lots of people who'd be standing in line to jump on, in on this if we ever walked away. We got lenders, obviously, we're making a huge investment here, we've got investors, we got off-takers, Microsoft and Apple, University of Richmond, et cetera. This, this, this is a valuable asset being invested in Spotsylvania County. So all we're asking is for a fair and balanced approach here to allow us to take into account what that recycled value would be, and the safety net is you get to evaluate it every two years.
Thank you. Question for Patrick.
Mr. Thompson, that number right now is ten point nine million dollars.
Right. But you made a statement, am I correct, that we don't know that we can actually recycle these or whether we have to pay somebody to come and get them?
We've been provided evidence that indicates at least for the cadmium telluride panels, there may be a cost entailed to recycle them.
We have to pay to recycle them?
That's correct.
Do we know what that is?
I, I believe that figure was approximately six dollars a panel. I'm going to look out in the audience for a nod, about six, six fifty?
So, so the doc, but the documents we have, the documents we have, if I read this correctly, the recyclable value of the panels and modules we have is eight million dollars. I don't know the math on that, but...
So we got a...
The total install, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, the total install cost was eleven million dollars. I'm looking at item number sixteen on the spreadsheet, and this report is proposing eight million dollars in recyclable credit.
Don't we have that information?
Yes.
That's what I thought, why would we add to somebody else?
This is, this is the information provided by the applicant.
By the applicant, okay.
Let me give it another shot. So we got to pay somebody six, eight million dollars to come and take these things. Where's the bond money for the labor to tear it all apart to send it off to pay somebody to take it?
The, the applicant's decommissioning documentation does include labor costs to disassemble the facility.
So what the bond, what the proposed bond amount would be, what this spreadsheet is telling us is that the cost portion of this includes labor, equipment, and material versus a net recycling for various items, broken up, broken up into categories, and we can talk a little bit about the details now. Number one is erosion control measures. And for Mr. Street, I would presume that the unit items provided here in accordance with the unit pricing that the county has, for instance, silt fence. Based off my math, this is fifty cents a linear foot, and I know that's not even close. Are you prepared for this question, Mr.?
No, sir, I'm not because those are figures we have not been presented with.
Okay. So has, has anybody reviewed this yet, Patrick, or?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I would like to make sure we're all looking at the same decommissioning report. You referenced number eight on the spreadsheet, which was an original decommissioning report. You likely should be looking at number thirty-six, which is, I don't know what the date is, I just wanted to verify because they submitted an updated decommissioning plan.
I believe this is the one with my package I've got. I've got it dated November fifteenth.
Exactly. Thank you.
As, as do we.
Okay, so part of my comment on this is for, in discussion of the bond or the surety to decommission, is that the unit pricing be evaluated, which I'm sure you're going through. But my initial response to this, comment to this, is, is that we're not in alignment on some of these unit costs.
That was what we observed as well.
So when we get to the conditions part of our discussion, I will come back to this document. If there are no other, to, to get a little bit of structure to this and some efficiency, I'd like to walk down through the conditions if that's logical, and then we can tackle our questions as we go if that's fair. Okay. You going to close the curtain on us? All right, I'd like to start out, if I may, I'll open the floor, you know, obviously for discussion on Part A, and I'm on page eighteen of the packet. Stated, yeah, December twenty-seventh. I'm going to start out with Part A general. If anybody has any comments regarding Part A general. I do have one under item number eight, Patrick.
On Street, sir.
Or Mr. Payne. Before the construction of the project is initiated, but no case later than fifteen days after the granting of a special use permit, the holder of the special use permit shall deliver to the county copy of the policies and certificates representing the insurance of the required amounts. Will the applicant have the property within fifteen days? So I think we need to look at that language, Patrick. I, I'm fine with the fifteen days, but could it be after they acquire or?
Yes, we, we could probably put that triggered at site plan rather than the special use approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mike.
So in section three, or excuse me, paragraph three in the general, looking at the, I guess the limitations there as far as coverage, you know, that million dollars per occurrence, two million dollars, six million dollar aggregate, those seem a little light for me in a property of this magnitude, a project of this magnitude. Have we had any internal discussions with even our insurance carrier or something along those lines to see what that would indeed cover on a project this large? Not cover, I know what it covers. Is it adequate?
This actually did come from the county's insurance company. I provided them the parameters of the overall project, and they provided this feedback back to us.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, go ahead, Ms. Carter. Sure.
Along that same line on that, on three, it says the applicant shall secure and at all times maintain public liability insurance for personnel injuries, death, and property damage. And umbrella insurance coverage for the duration of the special use permit and the minimum amounts set forth below, and shall include the county as co-insurer. What are we saying there?
The insurance coverage would cover the county as well as the applicant against any liability.
Okay, thank you.
You know, with us up every three years looking at the surety bond, because I used to work in insurance, and what's a million dollars today is certainly not going to be worth, I think maybe that we should look at having us look at the, I don't know how often we need to evaluate current market costs and what the going thing is, but I think that maybe we should look at adding that as part of the condition, that they monitor current market value or however we say that, so that we can make sure that we have the right amount of coverage going into the thirty years from now or twenty years from now, whatever.
Ma, did you have that?
I've made a note of that.
You made a note of that, okay. I would like to move down to number ten. Do I understand correctly, there will be no batteries on site for this facility? That's correct, okay, I wanted to confirm that. Item number twelve, where did that come from, Patrick? I have concerns, this is private property, I, I don't think the county needs to be in business of dictating speed limits on private property.
That, that provision was included to reduce, basically, it's dust control prevention. It was one that we'd seen regularly on other solar energy facilities to just slow down the speed of vehicles so that they didn't kick up as much dust on site.
We, we, we wouldn't have any authority to enforce that.
Yeah, well, that's the other point I was going to make, we have no authority to do so, right?
There wouldn't be public streets, so...
Right, so turning back to Mr. Street, did he leave? Oh, there you are. So I would presume that other measures to control dust, water, calcium, whatever it is, would be applied, applicable here instead of this?
Yes, so as with any construction site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Actually, because you have the ability to set conditions, you actually would have the ability to enforce this. If you're setting this for a condition that meets a concern about the health, safety, and welfare of the, the applicant's use of the property, then it would be considered enforceable. And I'll just suggest that generally enforceability can come in the form of either inspections or complaints with regard to many of these conditions.
Right, so how would we enforce it, though? I mean, to, to me, there are other measures. If the, if the, if the reason this is in the conditions is to control dust, there are other means to do that instead of getting into an enforcement situation.
Right, and I, I'm merely answering the question about, about the discussion of whether you have the legal authority to do it. You do.
Okay. I'm going to move down to number fifteen if...
I had a question about...
I'm just, I'm just curious about what, how do we enforce that? On private property?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to strike this because...
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be my recommendation to strike it.
In fact, I'll do that now.
Your local zoning administrator with Spotsylvania County Sheriff. Radar gun. No problem enforcing that condition, should you leave it in there.
Say that over again.
Could enforce that with the assistance of Spotsylvania County Sheriff's deputy? Radar gun. No problem.
But again, I, if it's a safety issue, I, I appreciate it, but if the, if the reason for this condition is here is to control dust, there are other means to me that are more applicable and easier to manage than speed on a, because you can go five miles an hour and create dust.
Well, I will say this, our employees, our county personnel are going to be on that site routinely. My third-party inspectors are going to be on that site routinely. I would have some concern if they're in the middle of a construction site and construction vehicles are going at an inordinate amount of speed. Now, I would think that's a common sense thing, but our inspectors will be out on the field, they'll be on foot, they'll be walking across the site, they're supposed to be cognizant of what's happening around them, but I think having a reasonable speed limit is a fairly reasonable thing for our employee's safety.
So, Mr. Payne, would it be reasonable to include a, a condition within the site's safety plan when you go to construction to address speed limit on the, I don't want to make a big deal of it, but I don't...
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's a great idea. In fact, we, we require limited speed limits for our, for our construction management plan, so it's very consistent with what we require.
Okay, and I would propose we do that versus the condition here. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tigno, agree with that?
As long as we have a safe condition out there, Ms. Carter, and we're going to be observing for those.
Yep.
Safe condi, irregardless of what's on the paper, we're going to be looking for safety issues, number one, all the time.
Thank you.
All right, under, under item number fifteen, I would, I would like to add, I, I don't have any issue with this, and I'm wondering where it's applicable, but in terms of soil testing when we go to stabilize, I would like to see some condition in here, and I'm looking back at Mr. Street about soil testing in terms of the most effective and efficient way to get the site stabilized in terms of growing grass or whatever it is. You know, I would look to you to come up with a testing frequency for the topsoil to get things established as quickly as possible.
It would have to be a minimum of four weeks before they wanted to plant any seed, whether it's temporary or permanent.
Right.
And that way they get the test results back in time.
Right, so I would ask that we come up with the appropriate language, you know, to, to do some soil sampling for fertilizers and things like that to, to grow grass as quickly as we can.
That's understandable.
We concur, and we believe that we have that condition in place, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Now that we're speaking of fertilizer and et cetera, okay. What are we using for the grass to go faster? And is there any danger, are health issues of what we are going to, what will be used? Do you, do you interpret, I mean, can you see that?
Well, there's state requirements, and the state code did change recently to where they cannot have phosphorus and a certain percentage of nitrogen, although during construction activities, it is known, even by Virginia Tech and all the state officials, that you will need some form of phosphorus and nitrogen to actually get the seed to take. Without it, in our soils especially, as acidic as they are, they won't work. Not even the native grasses will come back.
I, I just want to make sure that the lake is protected, okay? Of course, I'm sure that fondly subdivision residents are aware of this because they have a golf course, and I don't know what they use as far, all golf courses have to have good grass, and we know that, and they do too. And I just want to make sure that we are using what will be safe and, you know, what they are using at this point, they must not be having any problems. And so that's, that's the reason that my concern is.
Well, the, the interesting thing is, one of the newest things that changed in the state code is instead of allowing the fertilizer to be used any time during the year, on a construction site, it can only be once a year, or while seed is germinating, and it's only for a certain period of time. Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services will regulate that, and they will enforce that.
You are speaking of when this is beginning and when you want the grass, you know, when it's first seeded?
Yes, ma'am.
And that one time, that's, has to be what is required?
And, and all individuals who will be placing fertilizer and even using the, any of the sprays and stuff have to be certified through VDEX, and they have to know exactly when to do it and how often. It's all, it's a certification program that they have to meet according to the state code, especially on a project this size.
All right, we're talking about a project this size and this project, okay? And of what's going to be required because of this project? Is that required otherwise to other areas that have large projects such as golf courses and places, things like that?
Yes, it's across the board. Yes, it's across the board, every state project or every project that is not residential. Now, residential, there are some provisions to allow single-family residents to do it. Problem is, is when you're sitting at a lake situation, they have to stay 25 feet minimum away from the water with spreading any kind of fertilizer.
Who checks that?
That's just it, we're not able to. It's up to VDEX and DEQ would be the ones doing it. If there's a spike in monitoring where there's a pollution load in the lake, then they're going to start to find the source. And they will take their time, and they will find the source. They did it in Lake Hannah several times.
Ma'am, I'd also, floor computer, please. I'd like to call your attention to biological conditions three and four, which staff is recommending. Three is regarding fertilizers that requiring that they be, that they follow manufacturer specs, that they're not applied during rain, that they're not applied during high winds, and that they're distanced at least 50 feet from water bodies. Condition four requires that they don't contain phosphorus except for fertilizers applied during construction in order to get the seed to germinate, and that they be applied by a certified fertilizer applicator, and that they be applied at times, rates, and by methods consistent with state codes.
That's this project?
Yes. That's a condition for this project.
Yeah. So, that may be the appropriate place to have the soil tested, you figure that out, but. I want to move down to, I just made a mental note. We have a condition in here that the land disturbing permit and the decommissioning plan includes such things for removing a fencing. Why do we have that? And wouldn't there be some items that perhaps a future owner or developer would want, like fencing or if it's installed? Or is there any thought, I was just wondering what the thought process was behind that?
Well, we envision that when the site is restored and decommissioned and restored that, you know, at least the larger above-ground things like fencing would be removed by the applicant, or that we would have the funds to do so if we needed to. Things that were allowed to stay on-site were the landscaping and the stormwater management parts. To date, though, we had not considered allowing the fencing to stay.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up is because in the estimate provided by the applicant, you know, it was a $400,000 credit against a $600,000 item. So, I just point that out of interest as if I were a potential land, you know, to buy this property at some point, and there was a fence on it, I may want to consider having the fence, is that-
The fence is not necessarily just around the perimeter of the property. It's going to be in and out and all around the different sets of solar arrays. So, it might not be useful for other purposes potentially.
Yeah, I guess my point is a little flexibility in determining that at the appropriate time versus all fencing would be removed, just a point I'd bring up. Item Q, including the estimate, weather delay contingency, what's that all about?
The present estimate for decommissioning includes no reserve for any weather delay. It just seemed unrealistic.
What would be our concern there? I mean, weather delay?
Well, our concern-
What would you expect to be a weather delay? Because I can still envision, and maybe Mr. Payne can help me out here, that even if it's raining out, you can still take down panels and do those sorts of things to reclaim the site, can you not?
Yeah, that would, I suppose that would be true. The reason that we included no weather delays, it kind of compounds. I mean, if you look at that same section of conditions, one of the others that was there was regarding, I believe, workforce.
I'm coming to that one.
And basically, staff just kind of, it was our judgment that those did not seem accurate, they didn't seem realistic, that the facility could be taken down with so few people in such a quick speed without any contingency for a weather delay. And those are just examples.
Okay. Item R, including the estimate removal, transportation cost. Do we expect any disposal? I'm unclear if we are accounting for any disposal cost. I didn't see it in the applicant's estimate, I'm wondering.
I would have to say, no, I mean, the present decommissioning estimate, in fact, you know, the applicants maintain that there is a value in recycling those PV panels.
Okay. And then my final question on this section is under number eight. Just to be, so I'm clear, when you say include an accompanying testament from an engineer, you mean a certification?
That's correct.
Okay, can I suggest that change?
Testament to certification?
Yeah.
Easy.
Yep.
Unless there's any objections from anyone else, I'll make that change right now.
Well, no, I'm going to make a motion here, I think I have to make a motion. I want to make a motion on this section with those changes, so I want to be clear on that. So, we're going to, how do we handle this? Do we, do you come back with the changes, and then we make a motion on the changes? Or how do we do that?
I think, and Planning can chime in, but I think you have given, I have taken notes on what you've said, and so I think you've given us enough information, but in the wording of your motion, you should have, if you can, the-
Complete.
The idea, the complete thought form. So, if you want a whole provision struck, you should tell us in your motion that that's what you want to do, or tell the planning commissioner that's what you want to do, and how exactly you want to change. I've taken notes, but I probably would still have to consult you to find out exactly how you wanted these changed.
All right, so let me go through it very quickly. Item number eight, we're going to reword that for after acquisition of the property. Number 12, we're going to strike or revise it to say that speed limits will be included in the health, safety plan for the project. I appreciate Mr. Tigno's concern and share that, but I think that's the appropriate way to handle it.
And then, Mr. Chair, I believe to Jennifer's point earlier, especially because the county's being named as co-insurer, that that's reviewed on a regular basis?
Yep.
Or at least in inflation or something along those lines, you know, index.
Which would be item number three.
Would two years be sufficient on that? That's how often the decommissioning plan is-
Yeah, that would be fine. I mean, I don't think our economy turns that fast, you know, with what's reasonable. I mean, I even think that, I'm trying to think about insurance-wise, how much money liability and things like that. I don't know what the common practice is for how often you look at insurance policies like that. I never worked in commercial, so I don't know. Can you find that out?
Yes, I can further consult with the county's insurance agent.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, because I, and we could go with whatever they-
And then the final correction was item S, changing testament to certification. Okay?
Mr. Chair, if I may ask for a clarification? So, we also discussed G, and you're good with leaving G the way it is, then?
I'm fine with it, well, let me clarify that. If there's a way to add a little more flexibility to it, because I would think that, you know, a future owner, even this applicant, would want to perhaps do something different by keep the fence. To me, this is, all fencing's going to be removed, and thank you for bringing that up.
And then, you also discussed Q.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to know the justification for it.
Okay, and you discussed R.
Yep, and I'm fine with that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on section A?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
About the solar panels themselves, like the cadmium telluride and those kinds of things? I can't remember, I've gone, my head's spinning around, I've read this thing so many times. I don't think, is that mentioned anywhere else, or it's not mentioned in here, about what kind of panels will be used? Am I right about that? I don't-
I don't believe you'll, I don't believe you'll find that information in the decommissioning plan, ma'am.
Am I under decommissioning? I thought I, I'm under general, right?
Right.
Right?
There is no drafted condition restricting the use of cadmium telluride panels in the general conditions or elsewhere presently.
That's right, okay, because that's just been a big deal.
And we do have our representatives here from Dewberry to speak on that topic, if you'd like to discuss that topic further.
I had that on my list, too, I certainly would.
Yeah, I was just thinking if this was the right time, and I didn't see it anywhere else. I'm like, I think this would be an appropriate spot.
Absolutely.
I do believe the applicant at some point had mentioned that there was going to be a mix of certain amount of each type, but I believe that was in their report, I believe. Mr. Payne, correct me on that one.
So, it begs the question, if there is something besides these cadmium panels, why must we use cadmium panels at all? Why can't we look out for the safety and welfare of our citizens that have made a big issue of this?
Well, I will ask our consultants to talk a little bit more about-
I understand what he's going to tell us, truly, I understand what he's going to say. The question is, why do we have to have cadmium at all? I don't care if he wants to try to convince me that it's safe, that's his business.
I would like to hear it from him, Mr.-
Well, we can listen to him, and our question still stands.
Okay.
Yep, let's hear from him.
Could we start with maybe the applicant talking about their proposed panel mixture? And then we'll transition.
That's perfectly fine, Chair, if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to change gears real quick here. As you may recall in our report, and also the analysis done by the county's independent consultant, cadmium telluride is not cadmium, it's a different compound. It's safe, it's reliable, it's used throughout the country in other solar projects. It's efficient, and our mix is 70% silicone and then 30% cadmium telluride. That's what we're planting. I think it's important, we have here with us tonight one of the foremost experts on solar panels, including cadmium telluride panels, heat island effects, decommission, et cetera, Dr. Facilis Thanakis from Columbia University. He's here tonight, and I think it'd be good to hear from him about his analysis about cadmium telluride panels. In fact, the consultant, the county's consultant, reviewed his studies in regards to this compound as well. So, Dr. Thanakis, if you've got an opportunity to say something, that'd be great.
And make sure that we know, is it dangerous that he, well, certainly give us that information.
Good evening. Now, Facilis Thanakis, should I introduce myself?
Go ahead, you're fine.
Okay, I have been working on areas on different topics on energy and the environment for 36 years. 36 years that we have a national laboratory, Department of Energy, where actually I was leading under the auspices of the Department of Energy the National Photovoltaic Environmental Health and Safety Assistance Center, assisting the industry when they were very little to maintain friendly and environmentally safe facilities, actually environmentally friendly and safe facilities. We have been doing a lot of studies, probably we publish more articles in the peer-reviewed open literature journals than any other team. More than 400 studies, myself, I have four books, and I have developed actually two patterns on recycling cadmium telluride photovoltaic cells. My studies have been reviewed by environmental ministries in at least 20 countries, starting from Germany. And actually, I gave the positions to Environmental Ministry of Germany for a day, and they were completely actually confident with our studies. The studies were specific to cadmium telluride, that is a very safe technology. We started looking to technology, actually, we looked in all technologies, even from the first one, the dithyke web, crystalline silicon, zinc sulfide, there was actually gallium arsenite, CIGS, all the technologies. We have helped all the industry, for example, in silicon, we helped many companies on silent safety, silent explosive and flammable, and we have helped the CIGS for selenium hydroxyl nitre. Every technology has some issues. I mean, there are some chemicals in every module. Phosphine is used in crystalline silicon and diborane for boron and phosphine dopants. There is, there are some chemicals there. But the thing is that those chemicals are in solid form, and they are encapsulated from inert solids. Nothing comes out, and I know that because we have burned the modules, we have broken the modules, we have exposed those to any conditions, nothing comes out from any actually photovoltaic panel that is encapsulated with glass. Nothing can come out. We even burned those in temperatures up to 1100 degrees Celsius. Only 0.4% of cadmium could come out before the two sheets of glass fused together. Only when the glass is softened, and then the edges actually are still apart, and you have EVA that is ethylene vinyl acetate that has decomposition temperature of about 400 degrees Celsius, and that comes out. And at that time, at that actually temperature up to 760 degrees Celsius, you have about two torres of vapor pressure for cadmium telluride, which is a very stable compound. Cadmium telluride is not cadmium, is not cadmium chloride, is a cadmium telluride. Thermodynamically, it's a very safe compound, I mean, stable, stable. Safely depends, I mean, if you indigest it, it would harm you, as almost everything. But it's very actually stable, it doesn't get into the air for, unless you put it in generator for higher than 1450 degrees Celsius. You shouldn't do that, okay? So, we have actually studied all the aspects of the technology. We had even proposed to the National Toxicology Program, NIOES, to looking more into the toxicology of the material. It is much safer than soluble, actually cadmium compounds like cadmium chloride and than elemental cadmium. But most importantly, although will be toxic if it's indigested or if it's inhaled, nothing comes out. I mean, the people who manufacture the modules, they could be exposed to vapors, but everything is, again, there enclosed, and there is negative pressure, and the companies that they manufacture those modules, they have industrial hygiene programs, and they monitor their employees. If there is any issue, it would be at the end, like a disposal, and during manufacturing to workers. And we know, that's why we advocate for the end, we advocate recycling. We don't want any PV panel to end in landfills, definitely not in generators. There is something there in every of those panels. We advocate recycling, and not only for protection of the environment, but also because there is value into those panels. And actually, cadmium telluride, the current actually vintage of cadmium telluride modules, they have even more value than silicon for two reasons. They have tellurium, that is a very expensive material. Today's price is 200, 250 per kilo, and they have more glass, because they have two sheets of glass, front and back. Mostly silicon will have actually tetrar from the back, and they will have, that it has only, it doesn't have value really, it's only for fire. And they have one sheet of glass. So, we have done a lot of studies, and we found that in several scenarios, recycling is profitable. And actually, there is a whole enterprise in Europe, and there is a program, it's called PV cycling. I have been in advisory board of that, of that actually, of that organization. It started as voluntarily from the industry. It became, actually, it was covered under the WE, the Waste, Electronic and Electric Equipment Directive. And the companies are doing it, and they pay only a small membership fee, I think it's 150,000 a year, and they don't pay anything else, because recyclers making money out of it. I have done studies for recycling South California, where there are many big photovoltaic plants, and we have assumed that there would be a recycling center there, because there are more than two or three gigavatt PV power plants there. And we found that would be a profit of 1.6 dollars per panel, a profit. So, I'm touching so many items, I could talk, you know, a full day about that, but I think I should probably answer your questions. But also in terms of my background, you know, I'm now as independent actually consultant to SPower. I'm a professor at Columbia University. But I have actually worked with the oil industry with, for safety. I have helped companies like all the Arcos, Arco Production, Arco Chemical, Arco Oil, Mobile Oil, Exxon, 3M, Dow Chemical, to improve facilities, to improve safety in their facilities. So, I'm a safety engineer and- So I'm a safety engineer and chemical and environmental engineer, and my studies are energy and the environment, so.
When, when you're decommissioning a, a panel, do I understand correctly that disassembly of a panel does not happen onsite, that the whole panel is then recycled? You know, packaged, sent offsite, recycled, how does, how does that work? Is it?
Right, currently, for the cadmium telluride panels, there are recycling centers where the manufacturing happens. But they didn't have to have a high volume of recycling. They only recycle what could break, maybe one over ten thousand panels, could break during transportation, could break during the installation, and they recycle the ones that are of specs in the manufacturing. So they have the capacity to recycle those. But, so they don't have capacity to recycle, you know, right now, what would be needed to be recycled thirty years from now, they don't. But the technology is there, and it's a modular technology. I mean, somebody who wants the business could develop those. The patterns are actually available to everyone royalty free. I'm talking about the patterns from us, we have two patterns from Blue Heaven National Lab, and I think there are two or three patterns from First Solar, that are available to everyone royalty free. Technology is there, and we're talking about ninety-six percent actually recovery rate for tellurium, ninety-nine point nine percent separation of cadmium and tellurium, it's very important. So that actually cadmium is separated from the valuable material, and in Perry's book where they have the recycling center, with this separation by itself in the chemical processing that includes sulfuric acid, about point five M sulfuric acid dilute in peroxide, they create a stream that is below the action limit of the Ohio County there, I think it's point three ppm. In Germany, they were actually more strict standards in terms of what they could dispose cadmium, and they had additional facilities there with iron exchange and so on, that they were cleaning it more. So, there is, I mean, there is, there is no capacity right now for the volumes that we need to recycle thirty years down the road, but it's very easy to, to build that capacity, it doesn't take years.
So, so if I understand correctly, the, the risk to the citizens in this area is only, or anybody really, is only if it's directly ingested versus, you know, a panel breaks or, you know, it, it's not transportable, you have to directly ingest this material?
Correct, it has to get out of the sandwich of that encapsulation, only then.
And then does it leach, so if, if you do have a break and the cadmium, you know, falls to the ground, is it something that's, you know, can be easily transportable through groundwater? Does it leach into the groundwater, into the aquifer, or anything like that, or?
They have been.
I was just going to say, is there any, you know, data experience with that?
There is, we have not done studies on leaching of Blue Heaven National Laboratory, but there are many studies that have happened by others, from the Frankfurt Solid State Institute, from Norwegian Industry, there are from independents, there are a lot of studies on leaching, and the only potential for a significant concentration on the ground would be if the modules are grinded, are ground into dust, only then. Just breaking the, the modules, I mean, the, the German studies, I recall they were the first ones, they were actually breaking the modules into several pieces, I think maybe one panel to six or, six pieces or more, or about ten pieces, and they were exposing those to rainwater for a year and a half. Nothing was getting in excess of the natural background cadmium concentration in the collected rainwater. So unless you break it in very small pieces, there will be no leaching. If it's broken in very small pieces, it will. And actually, there, there is testing that says that, there is a TCLP testing, Toxicity Characterizing Leaching Procedure of the EPA, RECA, where they broken, actually, the, the test starts by breaking the module into pieces that is one square sand image, small ones. And the current vintage passes this test. So that simulates the potential of leaching in landfill. If it stays there for years, and, so even at one square sand image, they pass the test. There are other actually tests that they ground in small, very small particles, the panels, this didn't pass the test. But that is not only for cadmium telluride, that is actually the test that is artificial, and no PV panel will, passes that. CIGS will fail for selenium, crystalline silicon will fail for silver, amorphous silicon for silver. If you grind it, things will come out in time. But you're not supposed, why to, to grind the PV panel?
I've got one final question, there's been a lot of concern about the panels and damage due to high winds, tornadoes that we do see in the area, perhaps hurricanes. So if I hear you correctly, the, the potential exposure to a tornado or, or something like that would only happen if the panels are really, as you say, ground out versus damaged? Is that a fair statement, or?
Yes, it is a fair statement, and we have experience with photovoltaics exposed to storms, hurricanes. I don't know any exposure to tornadoes, but we do. I mean, during Sandy, I lived that, I have a photovoltaic system on my roof for twenty-one years, nothing happened to it. I think there was only one commercial system in New Jersey on, on a roof that had some damage during Sandy. During Florence, in North Carolina, nothing, almost nothing, I think there were a few panels in one.
So these are the same, I'm sorry, so these are the same type of panels that are used in residential applications? Cadmium telluride panels are used in residential applications?
I, no, they're not. Cadmium telluride panels are used only in commercial, they are not used on residential ones. But what we know is actually from both residential and from commercial. I mean, I've seen pictures with Fukushima with the tsunami and earthquake there in Japan.
Yep.
I'm not talking about cadmium telluride, I don't know what they have on their roofs. But we saw the whole building collapses and everything, there were roofs with the PV panels there intact. I think that my roof is protected by my PV panel. The roof is, I have the panel twenty-one years, the roof is thirty years, nothing happened. But I, you know, I understand the concerns, I was concerned myself in the beginning. Now, it has been actually during Maria, I think the latest hurricane in, I think the US version, one plant was destroyed, I think sixty megawatt, but they were the fasteners, from what I understand, they were the fasteners. And, I mean, the panels were dislodged, but they were not broken. I saw pictures, I couldn't see any small pieces, I saw panels dislodged, have been flown away, gone away, but they were not broken. And I think the industry has learned from that, too. I mean, to my recollection, the winds were actually gust winds, winds of three hundred sixty kilometers during Maria, and talking two hundred eighty kilometers per hour kind of sustained winds, and the panels are actually thirty-five to two hundred twenty-five, I think. But it was the issue of the fasteners. And, you know, they won't break into pieces anyway, I mean, when we were doing the recycling studies, we're trying to break them, we couldn't. We have to show them, because there is the glue inside, the EVA that holds everything together. And the top glass is tempered glass, it's like the glass on the windshield, that will crack, but it won't break apart. If it doesn't break apart, there's not a mechanism for the elements to get out of the panels, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so why aren't we using all of the other panels? Why is there a mix of panels?
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
No, I'm asking staff, or whoever wants to answer this question.
Well, staff has not recommended a condition that restricts the use of cadmium telluride panels, because the applicant and our own consultants are on the same page, they're in agreement that they, they're, they're safe to use in this, in this instance.
So that's your reason, because they're safe?
Yes, sir.
But they're not on residential homes?
I, I, I can't exactly.
That's what that gentleman just said.
I, I heard that as well.
So why wouldn't they be on residential homes if they're so safe? The question is, why are we having a mix? Why can't they just use the other panels altogether? Period.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, real quick, this, just remember, this is a commercial enterprise, and the cadmium telluride panel, and the silicone panel, is conducive for that purpose, for purposes of size, form, et cetera. So you wouldn't put a cadmium telluride, typically wouldn't put it on a house, just because of the size of panel itself. So this is for commercial uses, it's very safe, it's used across the country, has been for many, many years. We're only using thirty percent versus, versus a hundred percent or greater. So it's very efficient, and it's just, it's a reasonable use, and it's.
So to answer my question, it's just because you want to?
Well, this is a pro-business county, I know, and I know that.
I mean, it's just simple questions, you should have a simple answer.
From an investment and a commercial perspective, it's, it's a reasonable use, you know, safety.
It's because you want to use it, thank you.
Thank you.
I, may I ask a question there, Mr. Payne? I had to, I asked the chairman, and he straightened me out, I think.
Uh-oh.
The panels, they will not, you can't break them unless you saw them?
It'd have to be a catastrophic event to break the panels, is what Dr. Thanakis said. It would have to, you would have to have an eleven hundred Celsius temperature that you remotely try to melt them. I, I can't think, can't even think how that could occur on this site, not remotely. You know, we're, we're sitting here talking about how dangerous, our opposition has talked about how dangerous these panels are, which is completely untrue. They live fourteen miles from a nuclear power facility. I mean, let's, let's be realistic here and keep this in context, in my opinion.
All right, our consultants, do they agree with this?
Yes, we agree that they are very robust panels, we agree that it's contained between the two glass sheets. We, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We may want to hear if there is a broken module on site, what would be the time, you know, that it would take to get that module upsite and recycle it? But we think that there's very low probability of that happening. They're typically, you know, tested, the tempered glass is tested with hail guns, you know, that shoot hail at a close proximity to them, and we agree with the statements from the applicant. Yes, my name is Jessica Robbins, Dewberry Engineers.
Do the, in case there's a panel that breaks in cadmium telluride, to dispose, does that require a chain of custody form and all the, those types of things required for hazardous material, or is it, do you know?
Yeah, there's a return process, and perhaps the applicant could speak on the return process that they would have with First Solar.
I'm like Garrett Bean from S-Power.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, we, we do have a process, we have these panels installed throughout the country. At our facilities in California, I think it's important to keep in mind that these panels are under warranty as well. So what we do is we simply go grab them from the facilities, detach them, store them, typically in a box or other material, and then they come and pick them up immediately. We do fill out chain of custodies and other things to properly manage all of our panels that are on our site and leave our site.
When you say store them, I assume you're talking about onsite, and what type of container do you store them in?
Typically, we have crates, and we move the panel, again, it's completely encapsulated. We put it in a crate container, and then, First Solar, the provider of the panels will, will come and pick them up. These facilities are monitored twenty-four, seven. So if there is ever a panel that's out or malfunctioning, we address that issue immediately to keep our system at operation and meet the contract requirements of our PPA.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we will have about thirty people onsite that are actively monitoring and dealing with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question for the consultant. You were talking about the nail guns, this is in a rural part of the county where we have.
That was hail, it was an H, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, we, we have, in that rural part of county, we have hunters, that hunt with rifles and shotguns. Will they withstand those?
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a test been done on that, I can't particularly speak to it. Maybe the applicant has some more data on that. But I do know that they are monitored, and it is in the applicant's best interest to keep all panels up and operational.
Well, I guess, I mean, I hear about the safety, but I guess my question is, if, if we have some event where several of them are broken at once, and they get into the ground, is there a hazard to the community? Not just, not just one, but we have several of them. And then the other thing is, is how do we prevent them, in this rural part of the county, from not getting during hunting season, not getting hit by stray bullets or stray shotgun blast? How are we going to prevent that?
Well, I'd, I'd say that one of the important things about having a facility, facility like this is it's a power plant. We're, it's a power plant, we're monitoring this with our team out there, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Could someone shoot a panel? Yes. Is it going to go into the ground, is it going to get pulverized into these little pieces? No. Do I think a shotgun blast would damage it? Probably, maybe, maybe not. Would a rifle put a hole in it, and would we go replace it? Yeah, we would, immediately. Again, we're monitoring this constantly. Supervisor Benton did request that we go out and sample at our existing sites for any potential cadmium that had leached out panels and into the ground. That was provided to Supervisor Benton and the staff, that demonstrated that everything was clean and nothing had leached into the soil. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A few questions here, so, this may be for the doctor out there. Of the two panels, which are most efficient from an output perspective? And which of them are most efficient from an output to cost perspective?
Are you talking about the two types that they plan to use? I think it's a multi-crystalline silicon by Zinko? By Zinko, and cadmium telluride by First Solar. I think they have about the same efficiency. The latest vintage cadmium telluride is about seventeen point five percent. I think the Zinko is about the same. Now, in terms of production cost, you know, First Solar is the leader, they have the lowest production cost, because it's a very fast processing, in two point five hours, two hours, twenty minutes from glass to the final product. Now, I mean, there's a lot of talk that Chinese imports, the Chinese are distorting the prices, and they're as low as those. But First Solar has been actually the lowest production cost on real terms. You know, kind of audited from so many, for so many years. And if I may actually answer the question, why not residential? You know, I know the companies, there were a hundred, a hundred people, as I know, a lot of companies, when they were very small. They choose the business plan to be utility, because they could actually find their own ventures there, they have established contacts with the utilities. For example, what they do over the last few years is utility-friendly power plants. So they don't only provide the panels, but they do provide, let's say, I have, they have rate control, voltage control, frequency control. So they, having the whole, the whole infrastructure, that's why they are good on that, is not only the modules. And that's why they were close to utilities, and they thought that that is the most profitable business plan for them. They didn't want to kind, to dilute it with, with residential. So that's why you don't have the cadmium telluride on residences. And also, I would agree, perceptions, especially when they were starting early on in Japan and then Germany, perceptions about cadmium telluride, although those have been addressed, though. In the very beginning, ten years ago, when they started about two thousand nine, there were a lot of perceptions of cadmium telluride, but those have been addressed. So I think that they could, anytime, put on residences, there's not any issue of safety with residences. If we have power tools, now we have lithium ion batteries, but when we had actually. If we have power tools, now we have lithium ion batteries, but when we had actually nickel cadmium batteries, one battery, one C-size battery, has more cadmium in than one panel on the roof. It's a very little panel, it's very little there. And you know, the batteries you have actually to dispose, recycle every year or so, those you don't touch for thirty years, it's a safe technology. But they have that business plan, utility, so they have partners with utilities. And as I said before, I mean, their vision is to completely actually transition the power, the power picture of the country as other big ones, providing all the services to the grid that are needed with natural gas plants and smaller plants. They can provide those services. So, that's the business plan.
And then along those lines, while you're still, Doctor, so I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. The scale that we're talking, one point eight million panels, between the two manufacturers, right now, the, both the manufacturers are different type. They're the only ones right now that recycle the panels? And that there's nobody out there that can do this volume or anywhere close to this volume as far as recycling? As it currently sits, yet the patents are out there, you can do everything, somebody can do their own company if they want. But currently, we could not recycle these panels right now?
No, I don't think that's the case. I think in terms of dedicated recycling, it's only one company, it used to be two. One company is actually First Solar, that has dedicated recycling. The other company is Solar World, Dodge Solar, but they closed the facilities, dedicated. Everybody else, though, can use recyclers. I mean, the same recyclers that do glass, aluminum, and so on. So, I don't think the Jinko is unique of that, I mean, all the companies can use those recyclers. But they don't have dedicated recycling, they will send it out to others.
Thank you. And then for the applicant, I had a question. Have these panels already been purchased? So these panels have already, I'm hearing, head shaking, so the panels have already been purchased. So there, it's probably another reason why the seventy-thirty mix is because they've been purchased. And there's probably lead time and the manufacturers only had the ability to produce a certain amount. Not saying that's good or bad, but that's kind of what I'm understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, before, I'd like to point out, general conditions fifteen, which is about soil monitoring for potential cadmium releases and other heavy metals, and condition sixteen, which requires a sealed dry waste container to be maintained at the facility for disposal of any damaged solar panels as a precautionary. Mr. Chairman, real quickly, could the CEO address the panel question? Because that's come up a couple times. Ryan Creamer.
Hi, Ryan Creamer, founder and CEO of S-Power. Thanks for having us tonight. I think it's a great question. We have the two types of panels. Understand why not, why not the others? Yes, we have bought them. I think as you look at S-Power, the part that you want to have here, you want a company that makes wise decisions, looks forward. We look at both First Solar, an American company, Jinko is a Chinese company, panels come from Malaysia. They are the two strongest balance sheets for panel manufacturer providers in the industry. As we reach out, we have a very limited number of partners that we work with. From the standpoint that we do due diligence on them, we go to their facilities, we ensure that the quality and product that they're manufacturing meets our specifications so these power plants can run on the long term for the long haul. And I think, you know, from the strength of a sponsor's standpoint, from our standpoint, if one of them were to go, to go under, to go belly up, we're signing twenty-five and thirty-year warranties with these, with these companies as we buy their panels. To have the diversity and the classification between both technologies on the site is actually a benefit to us and the sponsors because if those, if those panels were to fail, you have warranty issue. If one were to disappear, we're diversifying that risk through that, through the procurement of various manufacturers. And to date, we've, we've only procured through a total of five or six panel manufacturers total, and that's over four and a half million panels. So, just to give you an idea. Any questions why I'm, why I'm still standing?
Anything else? So this would be, if I'm hearing you correctly, so you bought about four or five million panels?
Correct.
To include this one point eight?
No, this would be in addition to that.
In addition to that, just kind of give a magnitude of what your other projects across. And what is your largest project?
To date, it's about five hundred thousand panels, about just under five hundred thousand. And about an extension too? Yeah.
Thank you.
In California. Thanks, great question. Yes.
So at your other projects where you have these, do you have a mix of panels at other projects too? With some that are silicone, some that are cadmium telluride? Is that common for you?
This, this, this is, this is a good-sized project for us. The magnitude of this, you know, the largest we did was this, the previous project was all Jinko panels. Looking for verification. Yeah. So if you look at kind of an aggregate, we look at this as kind of, it's one project, but as you can see, we've broken it down to three projects with the planning commission. It has multiple off-takers to it, so we kind of view this as, as multiple projects in its own, in its own right. We do try to put with each of one of our contracts, the same type of, the same type of technology. And a lot of that comes into ease and facility as, as we go out and finance the projects, to keep a consistent basis and to minimize some of the additional costs that go into due diligence. So, great question.
Going back, so I just heard five hundred megawatts in Lancaster, and I've heard about this. How many panels are there?
Roughly a million and a half, somewhere between a million and a half and probably one point five, one point six million panels. I can get, I can get the exact numbers.
No, so I guess, I asked a question earlier-
Very, very similar in size and what we're planning on doing here.
Okay. May I have just heard, when I asked the question earlier, what's the largest project, and I thought it was five hundred thousand panels?
Single project, sorry.
Okay. So Lancaster is similar as a couple of projects?
Lancaster has a total of nineteen projects throughout, built inside Lancaster. Great question.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
One more question?
Yeah, Richard.
The disposal of the refuse on this property, we talked about burning and, and chipping it. Is it possible we make mulch out of all of it? We've seen a demonstration, they've got machines to do that, rather than burn any of it.
Well, I'll open the dialogue on that one. Staff has not presently recommended a no-burning condition. We have instead provided a number of conditions to limit the applicant's burning, to require them to use an air burner and a trench burning system. The, we've included a condition to basically bind them to the other commitments they made in their construction emergency operation plan regarding burning. But presently, we have, we have not proposed a no-burning, a burning prohibition.
And could I ask you why?
Well, the forestry operations of the present property allow open burning presently.
They didn't need an SUP to do that.
Didn't, that's correct.
So it's apples and oranges again. I don't think it's unreasonable at all that they mulch all of it. Like you can run a log through a mulcher a whole lot faster and you can burn it up.
Well, sir, if that's a condition that you wanted to recommend add here, that can be done at this point or recommended to the-
I've said that from day one.
May I ask our chief, what he recommends?
They, there are currently no requirements within the county code that would prohibit a burning operation. So therefore, you know, that's, that's the only, only thing we can really stick to. Would we be opposed to them, you know, going through and only mulching? Absolutely would not be opposed to that, but there is nothing currently in county code that would allow us to say no burning.
Except the fact this is an SUP, it has conditions.
Correct. But, but from what I have to draw from, there is nothing currently in the code.
If I may add to that, I may be uniquely qualified to shed some light on this, being CEO of a mulch company. The ability to mulch, you definitely can do that. Mulch, as it piles up, begins to break down organic material inside of it and get very hot. It combusts on a regular basis. And the ability to spread it out onsite may not be feasible, it could be. I don't know the amount of debris that would be created as far as green waste, if you will, from the trees being removed. But there is a very large fire hazard when it comes to mulch piles, unless they're put in winrows, unless they're spread out. And if they're spread out across the site, it will take very long time for them to, not very long time, it'll take some time for them to- Got it? All right. Back, I don't know. It'll take a very long time for it to break down to soil to then be able to plant anything on top of it. I don't know, you could definitely do some for berms, you definitely could do some to that nature, absolutely you could do that. But overall, it is a very, fires are very consistent in the mulching industry. And that would be a concern that I would have, is that they break down pretty, they create a lot of heat, plain and simple.
Mr. Chairman, could I add just real quick?
Any of the mic, yeah.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, planning commission members. Burning is only one, three methods to deal with the woody debris. We're hauling it off, we are using some of the mulch on site. And then the third option is the burning option, which any construction project would be allowed to do in the county. In addition to that, you can't burn May through September, so it's a limited process. If we were to mulch everything or to haul off the debris, this means more truck traffic. Not to mention the fact that the county's conditions require us to be three thousand feet away from any residence and to use a special deep trench burning process, which we have discussed with the fire marshal, on how best to do that. And they would have to improve that process and plan anyways. That three thousand feet is a thousand feet further, what the county would require to burn from a school, a hospital, or nursing home. So we're already being applied to a higher standard under the ordinance. And again, it's limited. So, again, this is just being, this is just a balanced, fair, and reasonable approach to allow us to utilize burning as one of the methods to get rid of the woody debris. Now, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Anything else?
Can I, can I go back to the panels for a second?
Yes.
So, if you keep the seventy-thirty, you know, split, however you want to call that, is there a particular place that you want to put the cadmium telluride panels? Is it a benefit to have it further away from people, you know, to protect them? Has that been discussed as to where they might be placed and could that be helpful and protect? You know, I know it's very rare that it should happen, but, you know, things do happen. And I don't, I don't know if that's been looked at.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that one. Right now, there's, there's not a condition that isolates or confines where those panels would go because the documentation that staff has seen has not illustrated that they're hazardous. But it is nonetheless, I guess, possible if you wanted to isolate them to a particular area. That, that sounds fair, reasonable.
I don't know if maybe I should ask the, you know, the expert if, how, I mean, I would think that the further it was away from people, you know, that would be better as you would be less likely to ingest it, you know, I don't know.
I'm gonna, we can bring up the doctor if you'd like, but just to jumply quick on it, I think the important thing to remember is here is that all the testing has been done. It's been shown safe, it's been shown safe from, for years. The consultants, the independent parties, the professionals, all know it's safe. Now, with that said, we do have to maintain some flexibility to design our project and make sure we can move things around to get the production that we need to make our PPA work for us. We're being very constrained throughout this process, whether it's through setbacks, whether it's through wetlands, numerous other mechanisms, so it's very important for us to have that flexibility. These panels are safe. And it's also important to remember that Fawn Lake, other communities around us are uphill. It's not like waters or anything drain towards Fawn Lake. They, Fawn Lake actually drains down and adjacent to our project, right? So, it's important to keep those things in mind as well, but overall, it is safe. And, Doctor, maybe you'd like to add anything on that? Thank you.
I'm not sure if there is anything to add. I guess I would repeat what all the studies have shown, that cadmium telluride, if it will takes encapsulated in glasses, is safe, is the safest among all technologies that we know, all technologies that are in the market. There is nothing, I mean, how somebody can bite on that? I mean, how can somebody indigest that? I cannot see of any, of any, of any mechanism of how, how actually parts of this could be in the, you know, can enter the human body. I cannot see of anything like that.
Mr. Chair? So did I hear you correctly in that, in that cadmium telluride is the safest of all the technologies? So you-
In terms of materials coming out is as safe as the best technologies that are encapsulated with glass.
Are there any issues, are there any issue with silicone? Panels?
You know, it could be if they have lead in solder. There would be actually more lead there than cadmium per square meter of, even, there will be some silver. Silver can be toxic, okay, that is, the contacts. But all of these are solid, they're not coming out, they're all stable. But in terms, if we're looking, you know what we do, I have the Center for Life Cycle Analysis at Columbia University, we're looking at the whole life, in terms of the whole, the whole life cycle, cadmium telluride are ahead of crystalline silicon because they're using less energy in manufacturing and they have a better energy payback time, so they can actually produce the energy that they use in a shorter time. In this climate, about eighteen hundred kilowatt hours square meter per year, that would be probably a year, in a year, or even less, maybe nine mass ten mass, they would produce the energy that has been used in the whole life cycle. So they are better from crystalline silicon in that respect. That is, in the whole actually environmental footprint in terms of carbon dioxide emissions, you know, talking about sixteen grams per kilowatt hour. And silicon would be close to thirty, because silicon actually, they need the high purification and of silicon to six nines and takes more energy for purification. So if you take the whole picture, they're environmentally better than crystalline silicon. But in terms of safety of materials coming out, they're as good as silicon that is encapsulated. Not better, as good though.
Thank you.
One other question again, for the applicant. The panels that have already been purchased, have more, have more panels been purchased above and beyond this project? In other words, if we were to say, hey, we only want silicone, do you have silicone panels that have been purchased for other projects? You buy in, because apparently you buy in mass and in bulk and volume, and I can kind of appreciate that for lead time. What's in storage without, obviously you have your trade secrets, or not secrets, but you have your, your business plan, your business information, I totally respect that. What's been purchased? And why purchase so many on a case that hasn't been approved yet? And why purchase so many on a case that hasn't been approved yet? I know, I know part of the answer for that because of lead time, but.
Okay. So, so lead, lead time being one, uh, the first, the cadmium telluride panels are exempt from the solar panel tariffs, section 201. So we did last year, uh, a year, over a year ago, made a commitment to these panels in, in moving forward. And we look, we do, we look at our panels on an annual basis, uh, looking at the number of contracts we've signed versus not signed, where they're at in negotiations, and try to balance a cost of it. Uh, and we've got, we've looked because we knew it was an issue for the, for the community as to what can we do? We've tried to minimize it as most as we could, but it's a, we do feel it's, it's a good, safe technology and are comfortable using it, so.
Does this power or any of the companies above have any investment in any of the manufacturers?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any questions?
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Did somebody ask me a question?
Excuse me. Uh, I want to move on to, uh, section B, uh, of the construction conditions, uh, get through this section. Again, I invite, as I walk down through these, other commissioners of speaking, if they have questions or comments or edits. Patrick, on B2, uh, explain the 70% shuttling of the workforce.
Sir, that, that condition was recommended in order to significantly reduce the estimated, uh, or the expected traffic impacts of the employees that would be coming to and from these sites. When we toured another, um, solar farm facility in North Carolina, that was, one of the first things that struck us was the large amount of, of buses that were there. They were clearly there to shuttle, uh, employees to and from the site. And we thought that a reasonable condition would be to have a, a similar shuttle program that could be used to group, uh, transport employees and reduce impacts on our, uh, construction routes of Orange Plank Road and Catharpen and Post Oak.
Impacts to what? The peak hour, the?
Volume, potential pavement issues, um.
So, uh, you know, I would envision, and maybe the applicant can help me out here, that the majority of the staff will be onsite early in the morning. If I know construction companies, they probably want to get started at 6:00 AM. Was that part of the analysis, Patrick? Or was it this condition based just off the peak hour? Or was it just an overall concern of, uh, a, average daily volume? I'm not sure what.
It, it was an overall concern.
Um, what, what happens, what's the contingency plan should there be an emergency of an employee that's shuttled in?
Well.
And I can.
Like an accident or like a?
No, if a family member gets injured and somebody's shuttled in and they can't get out.
Well, uh, as the condition exists right now, there would, you know, hypothetically be 30% of employees there with their own POVs.
Uh, yeah, okay. What I would do is propose to strike this, uh, this particular item, B2, because I see too many problems with it versus any benefit from shuttling in, uh, employees.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I respectfully disagree with you. Those, those roads don't meet state standards out there. Uh, they're very small. Uh, with all this traffic out there, you have to take into consideration all, all the, uh, the extra traffic is going to put on that, on burden on that road. And, um, I, I don't agree with you on that.
So let me address that comment. Uh, has an analysis been done? Um, and I think, uh, one of the public comments in that regard to the structural capacity of the road, do we intend to have that proposed prior to construction?
Based on the preliminary trip generation information we have thus far, we did observe level of service decreases on all four of the road segments that were looked at.
So that's level of service, but I'm talking about the structural capacity of the road to address Mr. Smith's comment. Has that analysis been done or are we requiring that analysis?
No, I, I, we don't have anything that I'm aware of, uh, on that particular item except for a condition that would require, uh, that the roads be recorded, um, and that, uh, bonds be in place should road repairs be necessary throughout or after the construction's wrapped up.
So is it a fair statement to say that if we require a structural analysis of the roads and they deem to be sufficient, that you have less of a concern or are you still?
No, I, I have a concern. I mean, I, I travel that road pretty much every day myself and, uh, I was a sheriff in this county and I know, I know what the conditions of that road out there are like with the traffic. And, uh, I, I just, I, I don't agree with putting all that additional traffic out there when we have a way to, to alleviate it. So I, I just wouldn't be in favor of that.
All right, very well. Um, I appreciate your comments. Moving down to item number five, um, I was not aware of this, but, um, does the National Park Service have purview over that section of roadway?
Of cour-, yes, we've received, uh, feedback from the National Park Service that they do need to issue a permit for commercial vehicles that use that intersection or a segment of Orange Plank Road, uh, which lies within their Battlefield District.
Is that a, is that a VDOT right-of-way or is that actually owned by the Park Service?
I believe that is still a VDOT right-of-way, but within that Battlefield District, uh, they, they have to get a permit for commercial vehicle traffic.
I did not know that. Thank you.
What, what is that process? To get a permit from NPS?
I cannot testify to that presently, sir. I, I don't know.
Uh, item number six, video documentation of the haul routes shall include public and private roads. What if, number one, I would presume this is before construction begins. So can we clarify that?
Yes, sir.
And I would also suggest we do it after completion. And again, it gets back to Mr. Smith's comment about the, uh, condition of the roadway. And then number two, private roads, how do we have legal entry onto, onto private roads?
The applicants have, uh, existing easements over private roads that'll be used to access the site in, in a couple of locations.
Okay, so if that's clear, I'm not clear on that, but maybe we want to wordsmith that to state more clearly to me what private roads are. I'm looking for help on this. Is that a fair statement? And then under, under item number nine, um, wide load deliveries, um, I appreciate your definition, but wouldn't it be better, we'd be better served if you just referred to Department of Motor Vehicles definition of a wide load?
Which number was that, sir?
My sense is there's some ambiguity here. And an attempt to define what a wide load is, wouldn't it be easier just to refer to the Department of Motor Vehicles, which clearly states what a li-, a wide load is?
Uh, if we were to do that, I think we would lose the, kind of the intent of this condition. The intent of this condition was to kind of, was to lessen impacts on, um, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I had this one confused. Yes, uh, 9C wide load deliveries.
I'm, I'm fine with the restriction, but your definition of wide load, I think we'd be better served to just to refer to the Department of Motor Vehicles standard for a wide load, what's permitted as a wide load.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So right above that one, a nine, a 9B. Kind of curious, I know, I know why this was put in, especially for some public comments, but why, it just seems odd, first and third Sundays, we're going to say they can't pile drive. Why, why not just do all Sundays? Or is that a compromised kind of? Yeah, I'm not quite sure about that one.
Uh, that was a, a recommended condition that was somewhat of a compromise. We don't have a requirement, a code requirement that says construction cannot occur on Sundays. And the, the noise that's generated from pile driving is significant and we recommended that, that this condition would at least provide two Sundays out of four where that noise wouldn't occur.
Chairman, I, I had the, um, staff check with me today about the Culpeper project that was just recently, and they put in there, they had a condition for no Sundays. Because I asked Patrick the same thing, like, how'd you pick the first and third? How'd you get that? You know, and I've debated this in my own mind, you know? I'm like, well, if you didn't do Sundays, then that'll just prolong the process, you know? Or you, you know, I, it, it's, to me, it's a catch 22, you know? And, but I, I was with you. I was like, what made those su- Sundays any different than any other Sunday?
Yes, ma'am. So I, I mean, is there a recommendation on this item?
I'm, I, I, I think people, if, should this project pass, I think people deserve one day of not hearing it, you know? Um, so I would be okay with changing it to no Sundays, but I don't know what anybody else's opinion is. Because I do agree, it's, you know, one way or the other, it just prolongs the agony and probably adds to their expense.
It's definitely my opinion. I think that it should be changed.
Very well.
Noted, thank you.
Uh, let's see.
Definitely want to talk through the public liaison.
Yeah.
That paragraph 10, just, I understand the intent. I just think that there's going to be a, I don't know, I'm, I'm not quite, quite sure about that one. Can you, can you walk us through that one, Patrick?
That was one of the ones I actually came across, uh, in looking at other solar, uh, projects of a similar magnitude. Um, don't, I, I don't recall exactly which one that was from, uh, but the, you know, the concept behind it was that, uh, the applicant would designate a primary point of contact. Uh, that primary point of contact would facilitate and look to resolve the problems that, uh, were being complained about that, and we kind of, I would envision that person working with the county in a, in a great degree. Uh, and then that, in order for the county to get a sense as to what are the regular occurring problems with, uh, with the case like this, uh, that we could find out about those, uh, through the provision of this report, if any. Um, and, and that's kind of the genesis of that condition.
And the liaison would be employed by the applicant, correct?
That's right.
And so Troy, I look to you and say, does that cause you more or less work potentially in a zoning violation or a violation of the special use permit, regardless of its construction or otherwise? Complaints are going to come through this liaison and not come to you first. Is that an issue or is that a benefit to kind of cut some off, if you will, have them taken care of internally before they come to you?
I think ultimately, they have to come to the zoning office. You know, if they go through this liaison, um, that may take some of them. But, um, my anticipation is direct calls, emails to the zoning office, to the zoning administrator on issues that would have to be addressed. I, um, the only, unfortunately, although a lot of things can be taken care of by just a site visit and a verbal discussion. Technically, the only way to enforce this conditional special use permit is through my office. It's a significant, um, responsibility, um, with a special use permit with these many facets. Maybe something we've never seen before. Richard and I have talked a lot about the zoning, I mean, the environmental aspects. Believe me, the bigger picture for the zoning office is the whole ball of wax, which is every condition that this planning commission and the board will ultimately potentially set for the project. So, um, I can appreciate the condition, but to answer your question, I don't think it will resolve a, a high percentage of the zoning complaints.
Thank you. And follow up on those lines too, not, not to bash any private entity, but to call out specifically a newspaper or a publication that may or may not exist in 35 years from now. What would happen if, say, Freelance Star were not to exist with the way this, this provision is written, or this condition is written? Would this SUP be in violation because now the liaison can't report to the Freelance Star?
I suppose if you wanted to keep the condition, we could add a quick amendment to say, or a publication of similar distribution.
Does it have to be a publication? Can it be a website?
Well, I believe this was only during the construction phase.
And it's only during construction? But still, can it not be a website? Is there any restriction in our code to say?
No, yeah, there, there could be different ways of communicating, certainly.
Yeah, I would think, you know, the, the citizenry is very savvy with this and I think of, you know, a website or something like that should be considered here versus a newspaper or a similar publication. So I'd ask that you consider that. Anything else on number 10?
I, I guess a question I got, uh, Mr. Tigna. Would this be more of a burden to you?
No, sir, I don't think it's a significant burden.
Okay, um, I'd like to jump down to number 14, if we can. The applicant shall participate in a joint construction traffic reaction team. I want to be very clear that it's as related to the project. I think it's pretty ambiguous at the, the way it's set up now. So if we could tighten the language there, I think it's a good idea, but to me, it should be related to the project where they can provide assistance.
We'll make that more clear, sir.
Those are the comments I had on construction. Anything else? We all set with that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On 14, what you brought up on, on the county staff, I'm, I'm assuming that that's included, the sheriff? It just says county staff.
That's a great point.
I mean, I, if, if we're going to do that, um, we certainly should include the, the sheriff and, and actually, to be honest with you, the Virginia State Police, since they go, they're the ones responsible for the enforcement out there on those roads.
Concur. All right, um, with that, I'd like to move into section C. Erosion and sediment control, um, I spoke with Mr. Street earlier today. Uh, I just want to be clear that this, you know, the design for this would be the standard two-phased approach to erosion sediment control plans and specifications.
Yes, sir.
And the, and the first phase of which, so everybody understands, are establishment of perimeter controls. And that would be for the entire area?
Yes.
And then the second phase would be per bay or area that they plan to develop?
Correct.
If I move down to paragraph C, C1C, um, I don't have any problem with the condition, but I think we need to strike how we dictate means and methods here. And I get down to the last paragraph, remediation crew shall remove sediment or be able to correct any erosion sediment control issues within 24 hours, uh, which I'm fine with. But Patrick, I'm very cautious about dictating means and methods and recommend that we strike what we tell them to have for a crew. That's up to them. They have 24 hours to respond, so.
Uh, sir, what, what, which number were, number or letter combination are you on?
C1C.
C1C.
You talk about sediment basins and how we're going to, and you talk about corrective measures within 24 hours, but strike the crew size and equipment and those types of things.
Before we move away from erosion sediment control, I wanted to clarify something. You had asked. You had asked Mr. Street whether the erosion, uh, the perimeter controls will be in place for the entire site. And I wanted to revisit that to make sure I understood it correctly. By, by the entire site, site A being 3,000 acres, Mr. Street, are you, are you saying that the perimeter controls of the entire 3,000 acres would be set up? Cause that, that is not how I understood it.
The perimeter controls are the first step. The way that the, that S-Power's proposing it is in a wave sort of a situation, where it's gonna go and it's gonna progressively follow the perimeter all the way around.
Right, so the perimeter controls would hypothetically be established in the first phase, the first land development area, but not necessarily the first 3,000 acre site?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we were on the same page there.
Right, so for the planned disturbance area, the perimeter controls would be set first, and that'd be the first phase. And the second phase would be the other structural measures.
The next disturbance area. Thank you for the clarification, everyone.
Now, um, that's all I had for comments under section one, I don't know if there are any others. Uh, moving on to section number two, uh, there were some comments, uh, that I appreciate from the public regarding the 400 acres. And I want to be clear that, uh, what we're allowing is up to 400 acres. And as constructed areas are stabilized, they are then therefore able to in, move into other undisturbed areas. Correct? Is that the intent?
That's the intent. That, and that, you know, as they stabilize a portion of that 400 acres, then another, that same portion could be opened up in another disturbance area.
So what is the standard for determining if it's stabilized? Are we talking about final stabilization, temporary seeding? What, what is, what is our definition of stabilized?
It'll be, uh, temporary seeding would have to be required, and according to DEQ, it has to have 80% vegetative ground cover.
So I would ask that we, uh, clarify that, uh, as to what the definition of stabilized is, so that we're clear. I don't want any, you know, misinterpretation of... I think we discussed the example about grass cover, you know, who says it's 70%, 80% or whatnot.
Now, stabilized is, is, uh, you, we interpret that as after you seeded it, or after the grass grows?
No, it has to, the grass has to start showing.
Grass has to start showing, so they could be, have a couple of weeks down before they can get to the next section.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Depending on the phasing, it's not when it starts showing, it's when there's a certain percentage of growth.
According to DEQ, yes.
According to DEQ.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Now, now during winter months, keep in mind, from December 1st to March 1st, we have the winter
Yep.
provisions where they can still maintain construction activity, but the temporary seeding has to be a winter mix and changed in the spring.
Right.
So on, on this, um, condition 2A here, when it says the project, do we need to be more specific and call it... When it says the project, is that this SUP that we're working on now, or are all the SUPs together? Or do we need to be more specific with that?
It is all three SUPs together, we actually have that defined, um,
Oh, later on?
under general, um, number one, we added a sentence that defines project as all three.
Just checking.
That's a good comment, thank you.
I had one question, very minor, just my own knowledge, 2C. Were we measuring the quarter inch rainfall within 24 hours periods? Where, do we have a weather vane somewhere? Do we have a weather station we're gonna put on site? How do we measure that on, you know, if we know for a fact onsite on the project, anywhere that we had?
The closest one I've got in that area is in Fawn Lake, there's two of them in Fawn Lake. Uh, one is owned by the HOA and at one of their structures, another one is a private residence. And we've been monitoring those. Now, regionally, we're finding that the Fawn Lake one is actually running lower than, say, Lee's Park. Uh, Lee's Park reported almost, uh, 90 inches of rain this last year, where Fawn Lake only had, like, 70 inches of rain. So, you know, that, that's why we're trying to figure out what's going on. Uh, but we can ask, you know, it's, it's totally up to the contractor or the, the applicant. Uh, many of the construction sites this size put in their own rain gauges because they have to report it to several different agencies, not just us.
That'd be part of the SWIP requirements? That, that would be part of the SWIP requirements. I would imagine they would have their own rain gauge and report to the different agencies.
Yeah, usually in something this size, yes, and Troy pointed out, this is the wettest year since the 1800s.
Yes, it is.
And I do have farmers reporting springs that have not been around for over 60 years coming back up, but they're also now worried that they're gonna be qualified as wetlands because they're producing like a stream out of these springs, so.
Anything else on section?
Just one more point, sir. Yep. Uh, the applicant's GDP does depict a new weather station to be constructed near entrance 3.
Perfect. All right, uh, with that, I'd like to move on to section D of the conditions. One that struck me, and I'm a little bit confused, uh, or at least I think I'm clear on it now, is, um, I'm gonna move down to item number three. As I read that, Patrick, we're not saying... It, it's, I guess my question is, that's not in conflict with the, the berm that we are talking about as far as the visual? Here's my question, is we, we, they have proposed to use, uh, mulching for a berm, which we're, we're gonna get to, but this is not in conflict with that.
I would agree. If, if the planning commission were to discourage or prohibit the use of a mulch berm, then this provision could still stay in place.
I would be in favor of that, the mulch is just gonna rot away and be gone.
Yep.
You're gonna have a berm.
We're gonna get to that in just a second. If you indulge me. What's that? Yeah, it's because, uh, we're gonna, it clarifies further in the, um, in item number seven under the, uh, fire rescue. Okay, so what's coming to that? Any other questions or comments on, I really didn't have anything else on, uh, that section? Yep.
I do have a question, um, if you'll think it. Item number 11, we went from eight-foot fire break to a 20-foot fire break? I don't think that's a bad idea, I'm just wondering what, uh, caused us to change that.
Uh, sir, our, uh, our fire chief ma- made that recommendation, uh, based on further analysis and research, and...
We agree.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Oh, I just wanna make a comment about the burning. I, I really wish that we could find a way to not burn. I mean, I legally can't say you can't burn, you know, um, and I really wish that the applicant would... I can legally do that, yeah. I, I just, I really, I don't like to burn. I don't wanna burn.
I agree, I, I mean, it's a SUP, I don't see why we can't say no. I, I agree.
I have no objection.
I, I really think, you know, um, I, I have so many children in my class that have asthma and things like that. And I know that that's above and beyond, but this project is above and beyond the normal scope of anything that I've seen around here. Um, and I've lived here my whole life, you know, so this is a big deal, and if that's something, I, I, I'd, I really would get behind that. That was one of, that, that is one of the biggest things that stands in the way of the project for me, cause I think that speaks to public health, so.
Duly noted.
Is there a consensus on the planning commission related to that?
I believe there is, yeah. All right, moving on to, um, section E, landscaping, maintenance setbacks and buffers. I, I want to dive back into the buffer question, and, uh, in the 350 feet that was reported, or, give me the backdrop to the 350 feet, Patrick.
The backdrop to the 350-foot, uh, whether or not that would trigger
You turn your mic on.
enhanced buffering, um...
You might.
Oh, so, sorry guys, I was really just thinking out loud anyway of my own.
What, what I'm wondering is why 350 feet?
Well, that was one of those... You know, when, when we talked with our consultants, Dewberry, about, uh, potential, uh, effects of additional temperatures, that was one of the, one of the figures that we landed on, was that any observable heat difference is negligible at 350 feet away. And we were thinking, uh, with this condition, that, uh, in addition to managing that increased heat, we also increased, uh, the potential distance between a source of noise when they were building the project and a home, um, and also, uh, increasing the distance where natural revegetation could occur, or additional landscaping could occur, and, and kind of settled on that number, that's how we got to that 350 feet.
Is it, is it related to the heat island effect that, uh...
That, that was a component, uh, but, you know, the, the 350 feet is also, uh, like I said, it also serves to attenuate noise and serves to, uh, provide more room for vegetation to grow in.
So if we install, if, if part of this, uh, part of the conditions is to install an earthen berm eight feet high with vegetation, what impact does that have on noise, uh, the 350 feet, could we discuss?
I would say that, that, that would have a, a significant impact on noise attenuation and probably visibility as well, although topography's gonna, you know, vary, um...
But the, the current plan is to install, uh, an eight-foot earthen berm in landscaping along the boundary line.
Where there were homes, uh...
Within 350 feet.
Within 350 feet, and where, where there was no established buffer in place at that.
So do you have, do you have a sense for what the positive impact would be, um, with the, uh, in terms of feet?
Like, what could be discounted?
Yeah.
I, I don't have a number for that.
Uh, I'd like to look at that because, um, in my line of work, a lot of the studies that we do, earthen berms and landscaping have a tremendous impact on noise dissipation, visual, visual barriers, those types of things. And I also think that 350 feet in some locations, uh, you know, it, from the boundary line where many of the homes are a thousand feet away, is probably, um, you know, very restrictive. And I would like to have you take a look at what the positive net effect would be if, if the issue is noise and visibility, uh, on that. And what I'm proposing is, um, I know some jurisdictions have 100 feet, um, but I'm thinking if, if, you know, we're looking at 150 feet, something like that, with the inclusion of a berm in landscaping, I'd like to evaluate that.
Um, you know, I, I can state for the record that, you know, the county does have existing transitional screen requirements?
Yes.
And when you're using those, if an applicant were to include a wall or a berm, they can, they can reduce that by half.
That's right, and that's my, I guess that's a better way to put it. More elegant way to put it is yes, I know we have that in our, in our ordinance, so, and I think it would be applicable here. If there's a net benefit to the inclusion of a berm and, and landscaping.
No, this is a concern I've had too, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Um, I know that in other jurisdictions, S-Power further setback is 50 feet, not, I'm not suggesting that, okay? And recently, Carl Pepper approved a project with only 150-foot setback requirement. Was this recommended, the 350, by the consultant?
Um, the 350 was a starting point for discussion, based on heat island effects. Um, we're in agreeance that that could alter depending on the berms or vegetation installed.
So the, so the, so a berm and vegetation would also have a positive effect on the heat island effect?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And a study could be performed where you could see the impacts on that.
I would, yeah.
What does the consultant say to this? Because, as they may be a heat island effect from the project, does the consultant have any, think he can add to that?
Ma'am, ours or the applicant's?
Applicant, I'm sorry.
Thank you for clarifying.
Please excuse me.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commission members, uh, Ms. Carter. Um, I, I think your question is, um, you know, one, what's the effect of the 350-foot setback that staff is proposing? And two, uh, you know, what, what had we proposed as, as part of our project? And what does that affect to the various different properties or residents around us? So, real quick, um, as you heard from staff and from the consultant, the 350 came from the belief that there could be a heat island effect on the surrounding properties. Uh, Dr. Thanakis, who's an expert in this, and in fact, I believe the consultant utilized his studies for this purpose, misinterpreted those studies, and Dr. Thanakis provided a report in that regard and provided to staff. I assume it's provided to the consultant, I don't know if they had a chance to review that or not. But basically, his conclusion is, is there would be no heat island effect, impact on surrounding properties. That there was no need for a 350-foot setback. Um, that 350-foot setback has a huge impact on the project, specifically, all three sites, quite honestly. Uh, and including sites B and C, uh, to the point of potentially just wiping them out. Um, so what we proposed was 100-foot, minimum 100-foot vegetation buffer with berms in areas where there's been clearing and there's visibility, um, that we would be able to eliminate and sh- any sort of visibility into the site from adjoining properties and also shield it. Some of the opposition has said that the visibility issue in the site where it's located would have impact on property values. Chris Kahlo's here as well, I don't know if you had a chance to review his report, that there would be no impact, uh, so long as there was shielding. Uh, he'll probably testify that that would be at a minimum 100 feet, he's done extensive review of that. Um, so I'm not, we're not per se against, uh, birmingham, we, we propose birmingham, quite honestly, uh, eight-foot berms, six-foot berms in various different locations, based on the topography, based on the view shed, and tree, tree lines, vegetation regrowth and replantings. And I actually have a, a slide, if you want to take a look at what that may look like and what the distances are from the panels to the residents around us.
Could we see that, please?
Can you blow that up a little bit? There you go. So what we're trying to do here, I don't know how well you can see it.
We can see.
And, and I did hand out these, uh, slides, if you can look at it. But, so for example, this shows the Chancellor Meadows Lane location, uh, number one site, entrance site. So you'll see the black is the panels, uh, the green is replanning and natural vegetation regrowth, the brown is the eight-foot berm, and then there's trees planted along the boundary line with the adjoining property owner. And to the point that Mr. Chairman, the chairman made, you'll see that the distance from the panels to the homes are quite, quite, a quite length. So just by example, uh, just going from the top and working down, uh, from the panel to the property line is 272 feet for the first house, and then it's another 100 feet before you get to the home. So in, in total, it's 372 feet from the house. And again, that varies as you go from house to house, 350 feet, 379, 710 feet, 490 feet, and so on. But the key is to block and shield the area, the adjoining property looking into the site. So again, what we had proposed was the tree lines along the boundary lines, a berm, and then vegetation before you even got to the first panel.
And, and the vegetation that you're putting in, the proposed vegetation, um, is more mature than saplings, I...
That's correct.
And if I make note, you made, you had a caliper reference for any potential trees and things that... So we're not waiting years for this view shed to develop?
We're showing six-foot evergreens along the boundary line right now.
Well, to, to be fair though, our, our condition is significant, requires a significant amount more plantings than what the applicant proposes in this one.
Okay.
If I may make a statement?
Yep.
I think 350 from the boundary, from the property line of the neighbor is correct. We start measuring houses from the boundary line, we end up having these panels right up on the boundary line cause the poor fellow's house is 400 feet away from the property line. He still owns that property, he still has to walk down beside his property. That's the whole purpose, to shield him from his neighbor. And talking about shielding somebody from the house site alone is just wrong.
Well, we.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Patrick, on the, on your proposal on the three hundred and fifty feet, that, that's the entire piece, am I correct?
Yes.
If, if, let me ask you this, if I, if I have five acres there, but I don't have a house on it, maybe I can't afford to put a house up this year, but I plan on putting one up in two years, are we talking three, are we talking three hundred and fifty feet from that piece of property? Even though it doesn't have a house on it right now?
No, no, not unless it was part of a platted neighborhood.
Well, that's not really fair to, to an individual that owns some property that just can't afford to build right now, but might want to build in a couple of years. I don't agree with that, I think, I think we should treat everybody the same.
If I may, Wanda and I had a conversation, it was my understanding that any piece of property of a certain size that could be used as a house site in the future would be considered under these same conditions. You're talking about a platted land, you're talking about subdivisions and stuff, we're talking about an area of the country where there may be some subdivisions, but there's plenty of people that own acreage all over the place, and as we know, that been here forever, people's children and grandchildren eventually want a piece of their home place and put a house up on it, it may be ten years down the road, but if it's a five-acre piece of land, that's a house tract to me. And it should be considered the same as, as a place that's got a house on it, because we know there's gonna be a house on that piece of property. I've said it before, all that land around there is gonna have houses on it one day. So what you're doing with these big tracts of land, and these guys are gonna put their stuff right up to the line without any consideration, those are gonna be subdivisions one day, and somebody's gonna walk out and reach over and be able to spit on these panels. See, we're not fairly considering the future at all.
Well, the, the alternative, it appears to me then, the alternative to condition three, the way it's structured now, which is to provide that setback where we had a house, or have a, at least an existing neighborhood abutting that property, would be a blanket setback of some measurement. Right now, we have it at three hundred and fifty feet for a case of existing homes.
Well, what would be your definition of a neighborhood?
According to this, it would be, that neighborhood would be something that was master planned or platted, meaning it's, it's cut up, it's divided into.
We're subdividing it all over again. That Farmer Brown's got a hundred and ten acres, old man, he's gonna end up with sixteen grandchildren, and they're gonna want a piece of granddaddy's farm one day. And we know that happens all the time, all these places disappear, and family move into them, or he gets in a hard spot and has to sell ten acres to somebody down the road to put a house on. We're not considering the future at all with these people.
To better do that with condition three, than a blanket setback is what you'd be looking for.
That's what I'd like to see.
And just to clarify, it says platted or master planned, so platted would encompass if there was a family division done, even if there was no house built, that, that would be platted. It, it's intended to be, it's subdivided and intended for residential use.
A lot of these platted things aren't gonna happen until after this thing is built.
But you're right, the hundred-acre property that, it would not apply there.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, just real quick respond to that, and I appreciate Mr. Thompson's comments and Ms. Smith's comments. I think what we're asking for is a fair balance here, I mean, why is three hundred and fifty a magic number? Culpeper County thought a hundred and fifty was reasonable, all the locations we've been in the country, you know, have never been more than fifty feet. There's, it penalizes us in many ways. If you, there are examples where homes, if you apply the three hundred and fifty-foot buffer to us, homes are two thousand feet away.
Floor computer, please.
Floor computer, please, thank you. Here's an example right here. You see the, the panels in black, the three hundred and fifty-foot buffer is in yellow, the blue shows the development area that's lost, but the homes are up on the road, which many homes are in this area, and they're, you know, close to two thousand feet away.
But that guy still owns that piece of property all the way down to that boundary line. What if he wants to stand on his own property line? That's the whole purpose, is, is the man's own entire property, not his house site. His house site is just, that doesn't, that doesn't apply to me.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, but I could put a sawmill a hundred feet from that boundary line today, by all right, a hundred feet, that's a setback requirement for a sawmill on a A3.
All right, that's by all right, this is an S U P.
Well, a sawmill is very, very loud for a very long period of time. This project, again, is quiet, it's safe, it's gonna be shielded, this is, this is the kind of neighbor you want, it's not gonna be a dense residence, it's not gonna be a sawmill.
Well, I thought we had some rules here that when we do something, it has to be equally applied to all citizens on the same level. You're talking about this guy gets a certain distance, and this guy gets another distance, that's not fair and equal.
Not, not per se disagreeing with that, I'm just trying to figure out why three hundred and fifty feet is a magic number.
I just think, given the size of this project, when you compare Culpeper to, to us, that's a hundred megawatt, I think. You know, I just think the unknown of, there's, there's a little bit of unknown in this area, and I, because at first I was like, where'd they get the three fifty? To be straight with you, when I first started this project, I would want it a thousand from my house. You know, and at first, and now I've become more educated, and I'm like, okay, well, I, I get this, I'd rather have that across the street for me than some other stuff. But I think the three fifty, and I, I agree with the protecting everybody's property, because this area is very, is rural, and a lot of us have lived, have lived here all life, you know, my property was in my, my grandfather's, and he gave it to me, and if my dad wanted to give that, to give property to my son, he's twenty-one, we're not ready to go ahead and plat that, okay, because we don't know what his life is like. So I like the, the three fifty across the board, that's just given my background.
Well, we certainly appreciate Planning Commission's position, and it's your call, obviously, I'm just expressing our concerns that this, this number originally derived from a misinterpretation. And other jurisdictions don't use this quite, this quite of a setback. So it has an adverse impact on us, that's my job to tell you that, and the property owner, the applicant, does have rights too. And I think it's important for me to express that to you as to why I'm concerned about it, and why I think we could review this to come up with maybe a more fair and reasonable standard that's uniform versus picking a number that originally derived from a misinterpretation.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that, we provided that position to our consultant, and they responded to that three hundred and fifty-foot buffer between the solar arrays and residential property line is consistent with the study's findings that he is referencing. When considering the maximum distance observed during testing in which temperature increase dissipated to ambient temperature, and that was three hundred and twenty-eight feet, so true, it is three hundred and twenty-eight feet versus three hundred and fifty. And we consider this to be a conservative approach, since no further evidence or documentation was provided to quantify the potential for the landscape buffering and berms to mitigate the propagation of additional temperature differential. So, so we, we don't agree that there was a misinterpretation of any data.
But the, but the three hundred and fifty feet or the three hundred and twenty-eight feet was out, without benefit of a berm in landscaping?
Correct.
So, to Mr. Thompson's point, I would offer this. I am looking for a fair, consistent application of the ordinance to everybody, and even though this is an S U P, we have approved many S U Ps in the past where an applicant installs a fence, a berm, whatever it is, and reduce the setback. Many of them.
And we do what?
We approve S U Ps with that, what's afforded to them in the ordinance. So if they install a berm, an eight-foot berm with landscaping, they're allowed to decrease their, their setback. And my question is, which they're gonna respond to, is what's the net benefit of that in terms of noise, visual impacts, and the heat island effect? And I'm not saying that we reduce that, but at least give them a chance to address that issue, because installation of a berm and landscaping is a tremendous expense. So if we're gonna stick to three hundred and fifty feet, then is it therefore fair to say you're gonna install a berm in landscaping? When we don't treat other, we're treating them separately than, than other applicants with the same condition?
And I certainly don't think we need to do that.
So I'm just looking for fairness across the board here, and I've asked just for the analysis so that we can understand what impact, I, I can pretty well guess what impact a berm in landscaping is gonna have on heat island, noise, and the visual impact. And we let everybody else reduce their setback by half. So why are we holding them to a different standard?
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not in favor, if somebody has some land out there, and just because they don't have a home on it today, and they might put it on there five years or ten years from now when they have money, it's treating them any different. I believe we should have the same setback at that piece of property that we're gonna have for any other place.
Completely agree, I completely agree. But my, when somebody installs, provides for a berm, a fence, or whatever it is, they're allowed to reduce their setback by half. But we're saying they can't.
Why?
So you're out of order, sir, this is not public comment. So, again, all I'm asking for is the analysis on that, if it can be done, so that we can make a good judgment call on this, okay?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about the analysis? Do we have, Ms. Rwanda, Patrick, do we have Dewberry on retainer, or the ability to do further analysis from the original plan to get this information back to us?
Yeah, they are.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
When we were speaking of this, we were talking about property and devaluing the property because of these things. Can you speak to that, can the applicant speak to that? Of devaluing the property that's in that area? I have a home, I don't want it to be devalued.
Yes, Ms. Carter, appreciate your question. And this, this has come up from the opposition many times, that the project will have adverse impact on surrounding property values. So Chris Kayla, we retain Chris Kayla, who's a local appraiser, very well-known, been here in the area for forty-plus years, to review this, and I'll let him tell you what he found.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow.
My name is Chris Kayla, I'm a Spotsylvania resident for forty continuous years, as a real estate appraiser and a real estate broker. I have also had my business located in Spotsylvania for forty-plus years. So as far as my qualifications, and then I have the largest real estate appraisal company in the county. The county has hired me to do estimates of value for the last twenty-plus years. I have testified in court as an expert witness on property values. So when I was asked to evaluate this very sensitive issue, being a Spotsylvania guy, me, I took it, took it with, very seriously. So I also certified to Mr. Payne that, that I was gonna be an independent on this. My compensation was not gonna be related to any type of an outcome, I have no interest in any of the properties, I have no interest in any of the parties. So that's how I qualify myself to address this question. So the research that I did, and I had no strong opinion about this before I started, more than thirty days ago, and I spent a lot of time researching this issue, on the effect of property values to adjoining solar farms. So I had not only primary research, means that I conducted myself, I also had an abundant of research on secondary studies that have been done on this. So I'm looking for all the research on property values that are credible. I say credible because looking at the people that, that did them. I found sources from certified appraisers that have been working on this issue for ten years or more. I looked at the Department of Energy, they came up with five myths on, on solar farms. Myth number three was the fact that there was no significant impact on property values in this gal's opinion that worked for the Department of Energy. She said that the research hasn't been going on that long, but they have been studying wind power for many, many years, and the data on that was that you're located next to a, a wind, wind generating farm with the wind turbines and all, that there's nearly not a big, significant effect from those. And so she concluded that it was her opinion that the effect on property values would be less significant to solar farms because the panels don't stick up more than about seven feet, where the wind turbines are a hundred feet, there's no flicker, you know, from the, from the turbines. And so her conclusion from the Department of Energy, which was a independent neutral source, was that there was no significant, consistent negative value as being located adjacent to a solar farm. I also found two or three in-depth studies from appraisers that have addressed the issue, and they also concluded that there was no significant effect. And the methodology that they used is the methodology that I have used when I have been asked to isolate a factor that applies to value. And that method is called a matched pair. A matched pair means that you take a home, or a property, that it's identical in every aspect as much as possible, that's right there adjacent to the solar farm. And then you go and find one that's similar to that, that is in a control area, a target area versus control area, and you match them up, and the only difference is one's next to the solar farm and one isn't. Those studies concluded that there is no negative impact that is measurable, that is significant for being located next to it. Now, I read, I read the paper, I see where the opposition has come out and made accusations that, that it's gonna lower the property value. Well, they, I asked for the reports, because I'm looking online, doing all the research, where is that research that they're talking about, okay? So I was provided, after asking for it, a, a report by someone that concluded that there was a negative impact. Now, it wasn't very significant, but, and it was only in, in the higher-priced homes, and it was only five percent, the same guy concluded that there was a seven percent increase with, with other homes. And so I called the guy. So I'm taking secondary research, and I'm calling, and I called the guy, I got ahold of the guy. First of all, the research, when I read the report, I thought it was very weak, they didn't have any matched pairs, they talked about a contract that fell out, and the guy didn't want to buy it at any price after he heard that there was a solar farm. That is not evidence that there's a change in property values because somebody backed out. It's just not, you just don't do it that way. That's what he told me. He also said that the visual impact, and by the way, the report that I was provided by the concerned citizens was about eight years old. I asked the guy, his name was Mr. Beck, he's an M A I, like I am, and I asked him, have you done anything since then? Because you, you've got the only one out there that says that there's a negative effect. And he said, no, he hasn't. And I said, well, you know, you based it on that one sale, what else do you have? He mentioned an appraiser that reduced assessments in his report. Well, come to find out that the assessor had a property that was next to a solar farm, so he started it, and then he started doing everybody's to be fair. So that wasn't any good conclusion there. And he'd also said that the visual, and this, this talks about the, we're talking about this landscaping and berm, in the report that he did, he said that these people would have to look at the farm, they had to look at these panels. And I asked him, you mean there was no landscaping or berms or anything? And he said, no. And I said, well, the property that I'm, the project that I'm looking at, they're, they're proposing some landscaping and some berms. And he said that, well, in that case, I don't think there would be a difference in value. So there it is, the only report that I was able to find, given to me from the opposition, and that the guy himself said that if it had some landscaping or some berm, he didn't think it would affect the value. So, I, even since I, and I gave this report that I wrote last week. So, even since I, and I gave this report that I wrote last week. I since got some little more information from the lady that works at the Department of Energy, and she gave me a couple more reports. And she gave one that was by a survey from over four hundred county assessors, from all over the area, all over the country where they have solar farms. And they surveyed what they do about adjustments by being adjacent to one of them, and the majority of them said there's just no rule about it. They also explained that the assessors that gave these responses said that the ones that had very little experience in assessments around solar farms were the ones that felt that there might have been a negative value, a negative impact, whereas the assessors that had been around for ten years or more, looking at it, basically said no. This reason I made that point is that there was some comments about perception. The perception to someone that doesn't know about these things is that you're going to lower the property values. That was the perception. They interviewed the assessors, and that was the perception, you know. Again, however, the more they learned about it, the less they felt the impact was. And that makes a lot of sense to me, too, because it does, and they mentioned about the fear of the unknown, meaning that they really don't know anything about these toxic materials, and then they find out that it's the same as in a AA battery, and they, "Okay, well, maybe it's not so dangerous." So, the other thing that I just got ahold of from this lady from the Department of Energy, had to do with the hundred, they measured damages, or they were assessing damages at a hundred feet, three hundred feet, five hundred feet. The only really negative impact, and so, when I say there's just no impact, the caveat would be if it's within a hundred feet. The studies that I've read said that if it's, and this is to the house, a hundred feet to panel to the house, because a lot of these are a little closer, less rural than these, and that there would be a negative impact within a hundred feet. Now, from what I know about this project, there's no houses within a hundred feet. Even with a hundred feet, they said that if you landscape it or berm it, even the hundred feet, they would not anticipate being a negative value. So, my findings, and so, and I also interviewed the one guy, his name was Kirkland, that the concerned citizens mentioned his report. He was the guy that did the one in Culpeper. I caught ahold of him, and he's been working on this for like ten years, and he had like one hundred sales of matched pairs. And he concluded that there was no measurable effect on property values. So, I, that's my opinion then, as a lifelong, not lifelong, forty-year resident of Spotsylvania, and an expert in the business, is that there is no measurable proof or evidence or support to say that there's a negative effect on property values. Now, perception, again, I'll say a little bit more about that because I know real estate, there are some real estate agents that will say that, or they'll talk about contracts that fall through. Well, they're not experts on property value. Again, I go to court all the time. I'm never up against a real estate agent. If I, I might have been one time or another, but I think the judge might have thrown the real estate agent out. To be, I could lose my license. I mean, I've got my file. I can support everything I've said, and I can't just make statements without adding some type of proof. A real estate agent can certainly do that. What have they got to lose? They may talk about marketability. Again, the perception, I think that the thing that, for people to do that are concerned about their property values, is let's look at the facts on what the sales are. Let's don't look at isolated people's opinion that aren't a matched pair sale that would actually prove a decrease in property value. So, that is my, again, I have a report that I produced. I added a little bit there about the hundred feet and the perception. The perception is real. But again, once you do the research, which I did, I'm very, I feel very strongly that the evidence to this date is that, and it's been going on for about ten years, not twenty or thirty, but there's no evidence or support to say that there's going to be, your property value is going to go down.
Is it your position that there would be no negative impact of property values in the short term? For instance, when it's, you know, the period of time it takes to build this facility, establish the visual barrier, get the landscaping in, and mature?
There's no evidence to that. In other words, I would have to find a prop, somebody that had to sell at the peak of the construction and isolate that sale to another home, and match them up, and see that there's a property, there's a decrease. I would think that would be the worst time to try to sell your place, maybe, during active construction, but I don't have that data. Nobody's really said that, but to answer your question, I don't have that support, but that probably wouldn't be the best time to sell if there's ongoing construction, but I can't answer that question. There is no support.
So, if, just to clarify your statement, if it's a bad time to sell, wouldn't that mean, you know, have an impact to the property value, or is it two separate things?
Well, again, I just put that in. For me to make the statement that it would be a bad time to sell, I really do need the support to say that.
Okay.
I just don't have that support.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kayla.
One question for you, sir.
Yes.
How are you defining, or how do we, in general, how do you find when you're doing the max, you call them the pairs?
Match pairs. Match pairs analysis.
How far away, so how do you determine what's adjacent or next to? So, in other words, right, fifty feet versus somebody's home who may be four thousand feet away or further, probably would have, if there was an impact, a different impact of sort. How do you define what's adjacent in your research?
Okay. The research would be adjoining the property that has the solar farm. And then, beyond adjacent, it'd have to be the number of feet, they don't have it in all the sales because they just don't have them. This guy had a hundred sales. But for the most part, he'd estimated how many feet to the house. So, that would be the target group. The control group would be something that would be, they didn't really say, but it would certainly be, you know, thousands of feet away or a mile away, or something that it would, no way in the world you'd think about the solar farm with the other group. And that's the matched pair. And that's the support that I would have to have to say that the property values are going to go down or up. Which reminds me, you know, I looked at the property, and there was a, there was a comment in the studies that I read that said a lot of it has to do with what the property looked like before the solar farm was put in there. For example, if it's a, you know, a pristine environment, and they're taking it down and putting a solar farm, that's one thing. It might have a negative effect. But if it's a property that's, you know, not so pristine, and I saw some cut-over areas that, in its existing condition, I would almost make the case that the solar farm's going to make the properties increase, if you follow what I'm saying. It does mean, you've got to take a look at what that property looked like before it happened. And when I looked around, I mean, you're buying it, but it wasn't, you know, pristine property. Timberland. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And if there were, I don't know how to ask this question, because you're saying there's no impact. If there were an impact, say it's nominal amount, with that, in your opinion, if there were, let me go back to this. Is there a case, independent of this, where a land use went to next to an adjacent property and decreased the value? Independent of this?
Okay.
Anywhere that you've seen, has that happened?
Yes.
Okay. Exactly. And I'm not saying this case.
Yeah.
And was it only essentially the adjacent touching parcels?
Okay. For the most part, it is. I did a report one time on cell towers, and come to find out that it did decrease the value of the properties that were right up against the cell tower. But if you were two or three hundred yards away and you couldn't see it, it had no effect on those.
Thank you.
So, a lot of it had to do with the visual, too.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to finish up this section very quickly. I just want to confirm under seven A, Patrick, that we're talking earthen berms and we're not considering the mulch berms.
That's correct. Staff hasn't recommended any conditions related to mulch berms.
All right. And then, I do want to add, I do want to add one condition here, the establishment of a three-year, well, a three-year establishment period on the landscaping. That is meant to address any dead, dying plants, shrubs, trees, whatever landscaping is, to reestablish within a three-year period. Because I think the way it's set up right now, it's one year.
It's set up for two years, President.
It's set up for two years. And I, the three years is based off the VDOT standard that we use on a lot of those projects. It's a three-year establishment period for landscaping that I'd like to see. Very quickly on item F, I think we addressed the water issue in our previous discussion. I don't have any other comments on F. I'd certainly open the floor to anybody that does. Any other comments, questions on item F? All right, very well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You had commented when we were talking about that, that maybe the soil testing issue could be moved to biological?
True.
And I wondered if you meant that as a change you would like to see?
It's a change I'd like to see, but it's unrelated to the hazardous, I say hazardous, the soil testing described in the previous section, and it has to do with the use of the panels. This is strictly to establish erosion control as quickly as we can, the establishment of grass, so.
Okay.
Whether that's in this section or another applicable section, E and S controls perhaps, that'd be the more appropriate place for it. You follow me? It's strictly to test the soil, to see what the best fertilizer. Looking at Richard, he agrees. Does that make, did I answer your question? Is that clear?
Yes. I think we can add some language to F four to address that.
And that's fine.
That talks about fertilizer.
That's fine. All right, at this point, it's five after ten. I'm going to take a ten-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at ten fifteen.
Thank you.
Everybody take your seats, we'll reconvene. Thank you for your patience. At this point in the evening, it's almost 10:30. There's much work to be done. So, at this point, I'm going to make a motion to continue the meeting until, for this application, until the next meeting of January 16th.
Second. Is that a motion?
Well, yes. So I'll move to continue this meeting to January 16th to allow staff time to analyze the, our comments and respond accordingly.
Second.
Any discussion?
Real quick, are we going to pick up on, I know we touched into F, or are we basically done with the?
I was done with F. If you've got comments, I'll...
Okay, no, I'm saying, are we done with all of these? Are we starting up at, say, G Culture if we have questions next time? Or as far as the conditions you feel work through?
We can certainly, no, you can certainly, if you have additional questions, this period of time also would allow you, the commission members, time to process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Two noes. Thank you, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Smith. Next item on the agenda is SUP 18-0002, which is Section B. For the sake of time, I would like to make a motion that where applicable, the comments and changes to the conditions as outlined in the previous application be incorporated here. And then we can discuss any additional comments that pertain to Section B. So I would make that motion. Are we clear on the motion?
Second.
We have a second on the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Are there any comments in regard to the conditions in Application 18-0002?
Maybe for Patrick. Are there any, between all three of these, are there any conditions that are differ, that differ across any of them?
SUPs 2 and 3 have reductions in the total amount of conditions. For example, there's no water-related conditions because the applicant did indicate they were not going to be using county water. So there's just that one condition, that the applicant shall not use county water. There is a specific reference to the inclusion of a particular berm, basically the berm and landscape buffer to be added to a particular property along an entranceway in both of those cases. So as I understand the motion, though, we would, we're going to revisit some of those anyway and we'll just update it to include that same reference to that tax parcel.
Patrick, do you mean no county water or no groundwater?
Uh, no groundwater.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the conditions for SUP 18-0002?
I guess just to clarify, there's also a, some, there are less environmental conditions for 2 and 3 due to reduced impacts.
Yeah, I didn't have any concern.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, you know, we'll take all your input, we'll revise the conditions in Group 1, mirror those in 2 and 3, and tweak them as necessary in those few sections where there's not as many conditions needed.
Right.
Right.
All right, any other comments in regard to SUP 18-0002? All right, hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to continue SUP 18-0002 to the next meeting on January 16th, 2019, to allow staff time to address and review our comments and suggestions on the conditions.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next up is SUP 18-0003, Section C. I'll make a motion to incorporate the comments previously discussed in the 18-001 application as applicable to this application.
Second.
I have a second. Any comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. I also make a motion for the remainder of the agenda to be picked up at the January's... Are we all set?
When you've taken the voice vote on the last, I believe it's the last three votes, I do not hear any opposition, but I do not believe you have unanimity. The secretary is required to record the vote of each commissioner. So I apologize for not asking this after the first one, but I know, I'm keeping track of the votes. I noted that when you got to SUP 18-0002 and you asked for the conditions that you asked for changes on to be transferred to that one as well, I do not believe all of the commissioners voted, and I could be wrong because I was not watching.
I'm happy to do a roll vote if you...
But I believe in this case, particularly since you had opposition to continuing 001, that you probably should do a roll call vote because, again, the law requires that each commissioner's vote be recorded.
My apologies.
Did you get one?
So we're all set with one?
Number one, my, if the secretary agrees, my understanding is that there were five yays, two nays, and the two nays were Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Thompson.
Correct.
And then I could not, and again, I wasn't looking up, and I apologize. But, so when we got to the second vote...
You can mark me down the same thing for the last day.
Let me do a roll call. I'll do a roll call vote. So back to SUP 18-0002. The first motion was to incorporate the comments in 18-001 as applicable. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Thompson? Mr. Smith? Ms. Maddox? Mr. Medina? Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock? Chair votes aye. The next motion is to continue SUP 18-0002 to January 16th, 2019, to allow time for staff to review and analyze our comments and suggestions on the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion.
Yep.
Are we going to be able to get some information earlier than normal? Will we be getting?
Yeah, please.
Don't need to be critical, but I got my package like Friday.
I got mine yesterday.
Yeah, my way here.
Yes, we don't have any holidays or anything in here that will impede us getting the packet out. So we'll get the packet out on Wednesday.
And that'd be available for pickup, too, if...
Yes, and if you want to pick it up Wednesday, that's certainly possible, or we can put it in the mail.
That's a week, Wednesday?
Correct, next week, Wednesday.
Mr. Chair, will that also include, I think, one of the consultant due berries?
Yes, we talked about that. If there's an issue with it, they'll advise on the additional study that we asked for. Any other discussion items?
Is that going to give staff time?
Yes, we've already talked about that. We feel comfortable.
Save the consultant's effort. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Thompson? Mr. Smith? Ms. Maddox? Mr. Medina? Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock? Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is SUP 18-0003. I make a motion to incorporate the comments into the, for this application that was discussed in the first application, SUP 18-001, in order to give staff time to review, analyze, and provide us the final document for this application. provide us the final document for this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Maddox? Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock? Chair votes aye. I make a motion to continue the, this application to the January 16th, 2019 Plenary Commission meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Maddox? Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock? Chair votes aye. I'll make one final, I guess we're going to, let me get to my agenda here. I make one final motion to continue the remainder of the discussion items, SUP-001, 2, and 3, substantially in accord review to the January 16th, 2019 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Thompson? Mr. Smith? Ms. Maddox? Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock? Chair votes aye. Motion passes, thank you very much, any new business? Hearing none, I will open up the Florida public comment on anything other than the cases discussed this evening. Step on up. State your name, your voting district.
I'm Moya Doss, Livingston District. I am a taxpaying citizen here in Spotsylvania, and I'm the owner of two properties here. I am no expert, I'm not a realtor, I'm not an appraiser, I bought my dream lot just over a year ago to build my dream house, well, guess what? My dream lot is now for sale. I received my notice about being 3,000 feet near the solar farm, my lot's for sale, and I've had many calls, and one of the first questions people have asked me is, are you anywhere near where the solar farm's going in? When I say yes, they say, "Thank you very much," they are not interested in it. At an HOA meeting at our neighborhood, it came up, people asked directly whether or not they were disclosing when people are coming into our neighborhood to look for homes for sale, if they'll disclose that there's a farm going in, they won't do that either.
Is this, excuse me ma'am, is this in regard to applications tonight because I can't...
No, this is just about me owning, trying to sell my property.
But I think there's an issue here with you addressing items that were discussed in the public hearing format, so...
Okay, well, I'm just trying to refute someone who says that property value is not affected.
I appreciate that, yeah, I appreciate that, send an email, we'll certainly consider it. Any other comments? Again, unrelated to the agenda items this evening.
This, Mr. Chairman, refers to a condition that was not on the staff report last session but is on today's staff report. Is that in order?
I don't believe it is, no sir.
May I know to whom I should address my comment?
You can address it to staff. Thank you.
Can you give a name to staff?
I assume that would be, is it...
Wanda Parish.
Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is adjournment, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Very well, motion passes.